Five seconds. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back to the South Windsor Town Council regular meeting of September 5th at 7:00 PM. Could we have a pledge allegiance, please? Roll call, please.
Councillor Ilango.
Yes.
Councillor Evans.
Here.
Councillor Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Pendleton.
Present.
Deputy Mayor King.
Here.
Councillor Kozakowski.
Here.
Councillor Leidecker.
Here.
Councillor Syracusea.
Present.
I have a couple of announcements this evening. The Pleasant Valley Grand Opening was on August 26th, and that was a very festive day for many here in South Windsor, including the Board of Education, Dr. Carter and the Town Council, and Mr. Maniscalco. The last day of the pool that will be opened at VMP was on the 4th, is that correct? On the 4th. And then we're going to have doggy dips at VMP, which is September 6th. And there's different times for different sized dogs, and it can be found at the Park and Recreation website. Patriot Day is Monday, the 11th. Rosh Hashanah begins at sundown on the 15th, and Autumn begins on the 21st. Yom Kippur begins at sundown on the 24th. And I also have here on September 16th, from 10 to 2, the local chapter of the National DAR, Daughters of the American Revolution, are going to be meeting at our library with genealogists there to help anyone who may be interested in finding their ancestors that fought in the American Revolutionary War. And let's see, what else do I have? Mr. Maniscalco, I received in the mail, and I'm just going to bring this up now I have it, is Operation Graduation. If you can mention that, because I received a letter concerning that. So if we can address that, you can address that in your town manager's report. Appreciate that. Okay. Item number five is Councillor Syracusea.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any additions, changes, deletions, corrections to the agenda? Not hearing any? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you, the motion carries. Moving on, we have communications and reports from the town manager, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In terms of Operation Graduation, I'm not sure what your letter is, but I'd be happy to take that, and we'll make sure that they get the funding that they need for this year, because I'm fairly certain it was in the budget, if that's what it's in relation to.
Well, I'll be more than happy. I think it's a thank you letter, or they're asking for...
Usually they send us a letter around some point to get funding.
Thank you for your generous donation. Please, in close, as a decal to show our appreciation, we report to working with you again.
Oh, okay.
So that's what we have, is a thank you letter from the Chair of the South Windsor Operation Graduation.
Great.
Great, thank you.
All right. In terms of my manager's report, first of all, Town Hall windows and HVAC upgrade, the windows are actually going to be delivered tomorrow. That project, as all of you are aware, is funded through ARPA. The windows should be installed over the next coming months, but I just want to make sure that all of you, as well as the public, is aware that those windows will be out in the back parking lot here, and there will be a lot of back and forth construction, both equipment and people, so please be aware as you move throughout the parking lot and around the building. Additionally, the HVAC systems are going to be getting started to be replaced. They are the original systems to the building from 1968. Again, those are also being replaced using ARPA funds. That work should start sometime in the fall. There is a possible potential that we may need to close the building for a day, but we're trying to avoid that by coupling things with a holiday, possibly. So we're looking at what we have to do with that, but we'll make sure that we let all of you and the public know in the event that we do actually have to close the building. Over the last month, I just wanted to provide you with an economic development update. I've had the chance to meet with a number of business development professionals in town over the last month. In terms of the prominent shops at Evergreen Walk, Whole Foods Construction is well underway and should be opening in January of 2024. Lens Crafters, the Goddard School, and Nike are all open. Sunglass Hut, Kung Fu Tea, Virtual Golf is under construction, and plans have been submitted for the three restaurants for the site in between the old LA Fitness and where the new bank is located. The new commercial development being built at the corner of Ry Street and Sullivan is coming along, and the developer has reported to me that he has tenants for the entire Phase 1, including State Farm, Faux, the Restaurant Faux, and the IV Lounge. He also has a potential business lined up for Phase 2, including some restaurant options. Quick update in terms of our splash pad. As all of you are aware, we had a Zoom call with the Splash Pad Company last week, myself, Attorney Corella, and Molly Keys, as well as Mr. Caldwell. We made it very clear to them our dissatisfaction with the progress of that project and that we're not interested in continuing moving forward with that subcontractor. They have made some promises to us, first of all, that that subcontractor will no longer be working on that project. Additionally, they're going to be providing us with a new timeline for the completion of that project, as well as benchmarks associated with penalties. In the event that they miss those benchmarks, we're expecting to receive those by the end of this week. And then lastly, we are looking for some type of recovery for losses for the amount of time that it's taken to get that project actually up and on the way. So hopefully, we should hear something from them by the end of the week, and I will be informing all of you as we move forward. The mayor took the wind out of my sails a little bit with the Pleasant Valley School ribbon cutting, but I do have a couple other items that are not on the agenda. First of all, with it being September, it's preparedness season, as well as hurricane season. I sent all of you an email today related to hurricane preparedness and storm preparedness. And I would recommend to the residents in the community to go to ready.gov to see what is out there for preparedness for our community members and residents, but also to check out our Town of South Windsor Emergency Management website as well. We have some PSA videos and other information related to what you would need for your family in the event of a significant storm. Also, I also want to make sure everybody is aware that with the heat increasing today, the governor did announce his heat advisory protocol, and the town submitted both our library and community center during daytime hours as cooling centers. That'll allow anybody within the community to call 211, and they'll be advised where they need to go in the event that they're getting too hot. And lastly, I wanted to make the council aware, our Acting Health Director, Melissa Pierce, has completed her master's degree, which has allowed us to actually submit her name to the State Department of Public Health as our new Director of Public Health. So I've made that submission today. Hopefully, her appointment would take effect on September 1st, is the way we've worked everything out. We are waiting to hear back from the department, and it is my expectation that we'll be at your next council meeting to introduce Ms. Pierce as the Director of Public Health to all of you. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco, for that report. Does anyone have any questions for the town manager, please? A lot of the water bottles are in the way. If you're lit up, I can't see you. Nobody's...
I'm sorry.
No, are you lit up? Nobody, okay. Deputy Mayor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your report, Mr. Maniscalco. In regards to the Town Hall, the window, the HVAC update, I read in the report on page eight where Mr. Stetson gave us basically a breakdown on how we're using the ARPA funds for some of these. And I'm wondering two things. One, how did we make the decisions in regards to what we were going to use the ARPA funds for in the project? And two, is it possible to, and this is just something that's come up in conversation, in regards to, say, our bathrooms? Is there a way to make them wider for wheelchairs and so on and so forth? And maybe some of those funds to be used for that in our Town Hall?
There... So to answer your questions in reverse, in relation to the funds maybe related to the bathrooms, we might be able to. A good portion of those funds have already been allocated, although we do have some savings and some contingency that we might be able to swap over, since we are getting to the end of some of those projects. So we might be able to do that. In terms of how the projects were identified and developed, we put together a list of projects that met the requirements from the Department of Treasury. So if you remember, the Federal Treasury Department released a set of guidance that was about a ream of paper thick, and our staff went through to identify what was eligible and what was not. In terms of projects that the town had, we put those out on the town website to publicly notify everyone, as well as we presented them to the council at that time. I think at this point, we've probably presented them three or four times. And all those projects still sit out on the town website for people to continue to monitor the progress of getting those projects done. So that was the process that we went through.
Thank you.
Is that it? If I could add to that, I know capital has set aside some funding for our ADA upgrades, so I'm not sure if Mr. Majors can look into that.
Yeah. Myself and Mr. Major, just this afternoon, I had a conversation about the bathrooms. He was going in to take a look and do some measurements to see if the bathrooms in the Town Hall met ADA requirements specifically, because according to his recollection, he felt that the upgrades that were required to meet ADA requirements had been done in the Town Hall. He said more than five or six years ago, but he was going to go back and measure to make sure that they actually did.
Thank you. Councillor Evans?
Thank you. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the splash pad. And I know you just discussed it. I'm having a little hard time hearing you between your voice and microphone, so I apologize. If you already explained this. I know we are looking at how to kind of fix this problem, what we can do to put some kind of safeguards in place. Is there an assurance, or is there anything we can do to ensure that this is done before the winter end of construction period comes? Like, how do we make sure that that's...
Yeah, so that's why we made the second request of the company Raindrop. So when we met with them, we told them we wanted them to put a new timeline together for us, since they're going to be getting a new subcontractor that needs to be reviewed. So we asked them for a new timeline with specific deliverables, when those deliverables would be required, as well as penalties associated for when those deliverables were not met. So that is why we made that request.
Thank you. I know that seeing that next to the playground, and I just would think it would be really unfortunate for us to be going into a new season of splash pad use and not have this completed, so...
Yeah. I think I would echo your frustrations. It's been incredibly challenging. I would like to recognize the town staff and the efforts that they've made to make sure that our splash pad is being implemented appropriately. What I would say is, you know, through their diligent efforts at making sure that the splash pad is being put in, we've identified a number of instances where the subcontractor Aquaturf has actually put drains in the wrong location, used the wrong size of drainage pipe, put actual features in the wrong location, has left piping open so that debris could go within those pipes. So there's been a number of substantive and significant concerns related to the implementation of that project. I think it's good that we caught it at this point in the process, because if that were to be covered and actually go into use, while it may work in the very first year, maybe even half of the second year, the splash pad would start to undermine itself, and then it would fail and collapse. As we're seeing in other communities who had splash pads implemented by this contractor within that period of time, we're starting to hear this season they're now having problems with them. So thankfully, we do have pretty diligent town staff that are keeping an eye on this and making sure that it's being taken care of appropriately.
So all of that work will be redone at no additional cost to South Windsor? That's part of the negotiations, the plan?
That is part of what we're talking about with them at this time.
And just for my understanding, when is that kind of end timeline, that construction? Like, if we were to set that timeline, we need it by, what would that be?
Well, I mean, the snow is probably going to start falling, you know, end of construction season is sometime middle of November. So, you know, snow is probably December or some timeframe like that. So, you know, they're going to have to get moving on things, certainly. And we've explained that to them. Even though the company Raindrop is out of Ohio, they understand very well that New England is New England, and they need to make sure they meet the requirements of our weather here.
Thank you, Councillor Evans. Deputy Mayor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I can follow up on Councillor Evans' question. So this Raindrop, they're not one of the companies that we use that did not have to supply us with an RFP, did they?
No, they are the one that we... that did submit a bid to the town. Raindrop is the splash pad company. So they subcontracted the work out to this other company called Aquaturf.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the town manager? Councillor Syracusea?
You mentioned that Aquaturf has had some failures in the past. Did we know about that before, or that just came about?
That is just being brought to our attention recently.
Did Raindrop know about that?
They expressed... They expressed to us on their call the other day that they are just starting to hear about these issues as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Syracusea. Councillor Lopez? Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any other questions for the town manager? Not seeing any? We'll move on, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. And item number seven is public input for any item on the agenda. Public input shall not exceed 30 minutes when recognized by myself. The speaker shall approach the lectern, give their name and address. Speaker shall avoid personal attacks or impugning or alleging in a proper motive to any person. The speaker may address the council on any item on the agenda. The speaker shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the council this evening on any item that is on the agenda? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on any item on the agenda? Going for a third time? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to the council on any item on the agenda? Not seeing any? We'll move on, thank you. Item number eight is Councillor Ilango, please.
Motion to approve the previous meeting's minutes. Be resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the regular Town Council meeting of July 17, 2023.
Second.
Is there any additions, deletions, corrections of the minutes? Not hearing any? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you, the motion carries. Moving on, we are now on item number nine, communications from liaisons, officers, and boards directly responsible to the council. We have Councillor Evans. Do you have any report for human relations?
So Human Relations Commission meets this upcoming Thursday, so I think we're just missed it in the timeframe. They had not met in August, so I do not have report at this time.
Thank you. Planning a zoning commission, Councillor Kozakowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Planning Zoning Commission has met twice since our last meeting to two topics on their agenda that have interest of this council and the public. Is first that they offered a positive referral under Section 8-24 regarding the abandonment of Collins Lane. As you recall, we had a discussion on it at the July meeting, and they went ahead and provided that positive referral. So I assume at this point, we're leaving it with the staff to work on that deal, and we'll eventually see it as a resolution for abandonment. The second item is a public hearing that has spanned across three meetings regarding a zoning text amendment to create a workforce housing zone to accommodate a multifamily affordable housing development on Deming Street. Since the... Prior to the last meeting, the plans were revised to reduce the unit count from, I think, 72 to 55, two fewer buildings, moving them away from the wetlands a little bit, adjustment in parking, and other issues. The public hearing was continued so that the applicant can address a issue regarding the restrictions that are associated with the Berry Patch development. All lawyer stuff is probably going to be resolved prior to the continuation of the public hearing, which will be on September 12th. So stay tuned for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Public Building Commission, Councillor Kibaski is not here this evening. I would like to mention, though, that we do have some vacancies on boards and commissions. On the Agricultural Commission, we need a member. The Agricultural Commission Liaison, we don't have one? Amanda? We don't have a liaison to the Agricultural Commission? Okay. I think Andy was... You... Caesar. It's Caesar. Okay. Caesar. Thank you. And then we have the Blighter Property Appeals Board, we need a member. The Building Code Board of Appeals, we need a member. The Building Code Board of Appeals, another member. Inland Wetlands Agency Conservation Commission, we need an alternate. The South Windsor Alliance for Families, we need a member. Arts Commission. Arts Commission and Arts Commission, we need three members. Water Pollution Control Authority, we need an alternate. The Cable Advisory Board, we need two members. The Architectural and Design Review Committee, we need a member. And the Redevelopment Agency, which is your appointment, Mr. Maniscalco, for the Redevelopment Agency, I believe, we need a member for that. And I do have a person for you to contact, okay? So if anyone out in the community is interested to volunteer your time on any of these... in any of these vacancies, on any boards and commissions, you can please get ahold of your political party or Amanda, the clerk of the council, Ms. Poma, and she'll be more than happy to direct you in the correct direction to get your name brought forward as a nomination for these boards and commissions. Thank you. Now, moving on. Any reports from committees? We have a pension committee coming up, don't we, Mr. Maniscalco, I believe? Yes. And on pension, everybody got a list within their packet on what you're on, and we have a pension committee coming up, just to say. We are now on 11A. Councillor Lopez, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion to approve item 11A1 as a first reading on the consent agenda.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you, the motion carries. There is no 11B. There is no 11C. Item number 12A, discussion item sidewalk installation along Birch Hill Drive and Felton Road. Mr. Maniscalco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, as all of you are aware, the, you know, the town staff came forward to all of you after some requests from residents regarding installation of sidewalks on Birch Hill Drive. It fits within the Planet Conservation Development, as well as it connects a number of other walkable areas within the community. All of you held a public hearing to that effect to see about if there was actual interest in moving forward with that, and I believe you have a resolution later on in the agenda to discuss and decide whether you want to move forward or not with doing so. And I know Mr. Stetson's here, as well as Kevin is here, to speak to both.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions concerning... Deputy Mayor King, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know later in our agenda, just for the councillor's sake, under new business, we have a resolution that I'm to read. The question that I have is, and part of that resolution, it says, "The Town Windsor's residents have requested sidewalks to be installed along the entirety of Birch Hill Drive."
Hold your microphone closer.
I apologize, thank you. 13B, that I'm supposed to read a little bit later for our councillors, where it says, "Whereas the town, South Windsor's residents have requested sidewalks to be installed along the entirety of Birch Hill Drive." My question would be, do we have a list of those residents that have requested it? Because the feedback that I've received is that they don't want it, the majority. So if we have... I would love to see that list and how it came about.
I believe, Mr. Stetson, didn't you have some communications with those residents?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow council members. I'm not sure if it was included in your packet, but I forwarded all the email communications from all the residents that reached out to me directly and the town manager here requesting sidewalks on Birch Hill Drive. Over the years, I have noticed quite a lot of chatter, chatting in the Facebook comment section about sidewalks on Birch Hill Drive, but I didn't include that in your packet. Along with this, we just performed the POCD survey, which, you know, I believe thousands of people answered. Out of 14 wants for the town, number four was sidewalks. And then specifically, they had a sidewalk question about where do you want sidewalks? And I think the number two was around schools, and Birch Hill Drive fits that definition.
Thank you for that. So a follow-up to that would be, then what is the pushback that we're receiving now? Is it because of the reality of the situation? Because on average, it sounds as if the residents, one, don't want it, and two, are confused about the side of the street that it's going to be on. So if you can speak to that? You can start with one or number two.
Can I... Actually, can I interject? Are you referring to the public hearing?
No, I'm...
Or are you referring to...
Well, it was the public hearing, but then as the deputy mayor, I went out and talked to the residents.
Yeah.
Up and down the strip. So I just want to know, again, as part of the resolution, it says, "Residents have requested sidewalks to be installed." Okay? And if I'm looking at this, supporting says five, opposition says 10. Okay. So that would suggest that no. So I just need to know, has something changed from when you originally just said, "Residents said it," and now all of a sudden it seems like the residents don't? Do we have residents that moved here?
So naturally, I'm only going to hear the requests for sidewalks when they come in and... And conversely, you're only going to hear the negative feedback once that request is submitted.
Okay. So then we do have a discrepancy. From the time that you just said, residents said yes, to where we have now, residents saying no, that live on that road.
Sidewalks are a very hot topic issue that I'm coming to find in South Windsor. Um, this is a historical issue, it goes back to two thousand and eleven with Hayes Road. Uh, there was a request to put sidewalks on that street. And um, a lot of the folks that didn't want the sidewalks came out in force, and there are still no sidewalks on Hayes. Just overarching, um, the town residents passed a referendum last year, um, allowing us to spend a million dollars a year on sidewalks. Uh, so I would assume that residents are seeking sidewalks, seeing that they passed the rest of the referendum. Additionally, we had the Plan of Conservation Development Survey, um, which I'm sure you guys are all familiar with, that says that residents are seeking sidewalks. There is no denying that uh, the folks that don't want the sidewalks came out and very pointedly and eloquently stated why they didn't want sidewalks. And um, I leave the decision up to you guys.
Fair, thank you, so the second question was, how do we determine where that sidewalk goes? On what side of the street, let me be more clear.
From, from my perspective, it's a dollar and cents bottom line issue, uh, we put it where it's most affordable.
So.
You know, go back to the side of the street, because I'm, which side of the street doesn't go on?
North.
How is that determined, I think is what you're asking?
But he just said dollars and cents, it's just cheaper to put it on the north.
It's cheaper to put it on the north. On the south side, there's additional retaining walls that would have to be installed, which would make it anywhere from two hundred to four hundred thousand dollars more expensive.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, we're saying, so how much, what's, what's the dollar difference, roughly?
Two hundred to four hundred thousand, depending.
For the south side.
Okay, so, I guess.
Put them on both sides.
Right, 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 I got you. So, does it make sense, and I guess I'm, I'm, I'm coming now, we hope bunch of stuff, and, and let me just be clear, I'm a sidewalk guy. I'm from Philadelphia, I'm from the city, we got sidewalks all over, I love sidewalks, especially for kids and residents that want to walk, don't want to walk the street. However, um, my trepidation is just the fact that our residents are saying no, and I don't want to waste the money? If we can put the sidewalk somewhere else, that makes more sense? And nothing against what you just said, but, I mean, because it's cheaper? It doesn't seem that, I mean, so they're not going to be connected, but just because it's cheaper, we're going to put it on that side?
It's really not my place to debate this.
No, not at all, it's just your job.
I, I can give you folks just some opposing viewpoints.
Yep.
Um, last time we talked about this in this room, you guys requested sidewalks in Valley View, uh, once the sidewalks on Birch Hill Drive were installed to give some connectivity. Um, without putting the sidewalks at Birch Hill Drive, do we go ahead and put the sidewalks in Valley View? And if we do go ahead and put the time and effort into, you know, proposing the sidewalks in Valley View, um, I would be willing to bet that you, you're going to consistently find some folks that don't want sidewalks. Um, you know, Deming Street, um, you're going to hear residents want sidewalks and they don't want sidewalks. Um, that's the great part of a democracy, you get to hear both sides, and unfortunately, you guys have to make the decision. You know, I would love to install sidewalks on Birch Hill Drive, but uh, if that doesn't work there, we'll go and try to install sidewalks somewhere else in town. But from my intimate perspective, dealing with all the residents that don't want sidewalks, um, you're going to find, uh, you know, consistently, there's going to be a segment of the population that don't want sidewalks, and that's due to their age, they don't want to shovel, it's due to the change. Nobody really likes change. And I, you know, I get it, um, unfortunately, I have to walk that tight line, uh, to try to get these folks to want to install sidewalks. I just ran, ran into the same issue on Pleasant Valley Road. You know, there's a handful of residents that did not want the sidewalks, and it took a little bit of coercing for them to come around.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor King, Councilor Leidecker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can't remember when, a year ago, two years ago, we had some other residents come in and talk to us about a traffic issue in their neighborhood. We did a traffic calming policy, and as part of that, um, and it was Laurel Drive. As part of that, we sent letters to all the neighbors that, you know, potentially move, putting a stop sign in would affect the neighborhood. Have we considered sending letters to every single neighbor on Birch Hill Drive and asking them their opinion to see what the majority of that neighborhood wants? I note, three emails of residents asking, I'm assuming there's more than three houses on that street. We had quite a few who came in and spoke in opposition. So, can we just really get a handle on what the neighborhood wants and just send them a postcard? Say, please link onto this, yes or no on the sidewalks, give them a deadline, and let's see what they want before we put sidewalks in a neighborhood where maybe the majority doesn't want it?
Certainly, but do we define the neighborhood as just Birch Hill Drive? Or the true neighborhood for all the residents that would be using that sidewalk that don't necessarily live on Birch Hill Drive?
I think it needs to be the property owners who you're going to put the sidewalk on.
Okay.
Not necessarily the others who are going to use it, we don't know how to identify all those people necessarily. But I think the neighbors who are going to have to upkeep the sidewalk and have their yards kind of taken over by it, I think. I mean, I'm one of nine, I don't know what any other, the other councillors say, but that would be my suggestion. The homeowners who are going to be directly affected, let's send them a letter and just say, please respond by X date, and let's get a real good sense of what they want. Just my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilor Leidecker, Councilor Sarkisian.
You mentioned a million dollars was already approved, right? So, money really isn't the issue as far as having to accept spending the money. Um, I just know, and you wanted to hear what the rest of us feel. I know there's a mother of two children here that said, you know, they want sidewalks to make sure when they're walking with their kids, they're safe. I know there was a father that was in here with his kids. For me personally, it's very hard for me to vote against, you know, parents that want their kids to be safe walking on a sidewalk, because the last thing I'd want to happen is, I vote that down, and then God forbid, something happens, uh, it wouldn't sit right with me. So, um, I agree, it's good to hear what the neighborhood wants, but for me, if the minority includes some parents that are concerned with their kids, that are maybe going to be there for the next twenty, thirty, forty years, um, to me, that's, that's something that I think should happen.
Thank you, Councilor Sarkisian, Councilor Kazakowski.
Just very quickly, uh, Mr. Maniscalco, can you just explain how the money is in a referendum, just for some of our new councillors? I mean, it's not necessarily that the money is there, it's when we use it, we fund it, correct? We don't have a pool of a million dollars just waiting for sidewalks, is that correct?
Well, it's not sitting, so, we have the author, we have the approved authorization from the taxpayers to use that money. So the way the process would probably work, um, for a project like this, um, the, the town would probably float that money out of our general fund and then reimburse ourselves through issuing bonds. Typically, we do that in February. So we have the approval and the authority to go issue those bonds, um, but we just don't have the actual, like, it's not cash in hand.
Thank you.
Councilor Kazakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, question from Mr. Stetson, um, do we have a townwide sidewalk plan?
Yes.
And is, um, do you have an idea about one that was adopted?
It's part of the complete streets policy, um, anytime we touch a road, we look at making it accessible for all road users other than drivers, which include pedestrians, the bicyclists, and whatnot.
Okay, um, online, I did see a draft version of a sidewalk plan, um, and it included, um, the segment of Birch, Birch Road as a priority, um, for sidewalk installation. Um, has that changed? That priority changed at all or, or reinforced since, since the, you know, drafting of that plan?
You know, the overarching sentiment is to try to make it so that students can walk to schools. And Orchard Hill is about an eighth of a mile away, uh, Birch Hill Road is about an eighth of a mile away from Orchard Hill School, so it, it makes sense to put it there.
Thank you. Uh, actually, one more thing, I'm sorry, so you alluded to, um, well, you said that it would be cheaper to build it on the north side. Um, but I think there's part of it is also there's practical reasons why the north side is advantageous to the south side. Um, could you go through maybe some of the advantages of one side over the other?
You know, practicality wise, if we could put it on the south side, it would make for one less crossing, um, because by putting it on the north side, students, users are going to have to cross diagonally, um, or, you know, across Birch Hill to get to the existing sidewalk. There is ample right of way along Birch Hill Road, so there will be no need for any eminent domain or easement taking. Um, so either side works in, in that regard. There's telephone poles on either side of the road, but uh, the sidewalks can be adjusted around those, so those don't have to be relocated. On the south side, there'd be numerous, uh, large trees that would have to be taken down, um, and quite a lot of earthwork with retaining walls to make the sidewalk work. On the north side, uh, there are going to be some residents that are impacted with their bushes in their landscaping, but, um, you know, I like to look at the town right of way as, uh, all, all users, um, you know, it's a shared space, it's not the town's. But those plantings are in the town right of way, so we do have the right to relocate them for them. And I have talked to a few of those residents about their concerns about that and let them know that their hydrangeas or whatever they are, we would move them for them, replant them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kazakowski, Councilor Evans?
Thank you, most of my questions and thoughts have been asked, um, but I did have clarification about the, the side of the road. Um, I dropped a child off at T E, so I happened to come down that way here. Um, and I did notice the first third, the telephone poles are on the left, and then they transition to the right. The fire hydrants are on the right, the north side, um, most of the way down. The north side seems like it has more obstacles to work around. I think you've kind of answered that, but it would connect it to have it on the south side to the Felt and to Foster. So having those telephone poles, those are not the biggest obstacle? Is that correct? What is the biggest obstacle to the south side? Just the property and the plantings?
Yeah, closer to, um, Foster Road, the elevation of folks' front yards go about four or five feet upright at the edge of the road. So we would have to go in, excavate all that out, and put some sort of retaining wall system in, um, to hold back the earth. And that's, it's, it's not cheap.
And on the north side, with probably two thirds to three quarters having the telephone poles, does that require any relocation? You just go on the other side of them?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then on the Fos, on the Felt side, the sidewalk stops what may be, it stops at the top of, of Valley View. Would that be connected to the Birch Hill? That be closed?
That, that is the intent to have connectivity, yes. Um, I did not approach that, uh, in the, in this proposal, um, but I feel that that would be easy sell because that's just a couple properties.
Um, and then I think I disagree with Councilor Leidecker just a little bit, and if we were to reach out to people who are, would be benefiting or affected by the sidewalks, to me, I think, um, residents, you know, near Birch Hill on Felt and also the north end of Country View, it would be important to know the access they would want to Birch Hill, especially for students going to T E. Um, and then my only other question perhaps is for the town attorney. If we were to deny sidewalks, and shortly thereafter, someone were to be hit by a car while not walking on a sidewalk, does the town hold any liability?
Is the question if, does somebody get hit in the town road if the town is liable for it? Because there's no sidewalks, is that the question?
Because we denied putting the sidewalk.
Because you deny it? No, uh, the town, you know, the town is not responsible for the liabilities of third parties who act in the town roadway. Um, the fact that there may or may not be a sidewalk is not the, an issue related to liability of the town for, for that scenario. So that's not, that's not a concern.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Evans, uh, Councilor Alanga?
Um, mine is not a question, more of an observation, I'm a complete advocate for sidewalks. I believe it's, you know, it's really healthy to have sidewalks, it increases mobility for elderly people, for younger children, for, you know, families who walk to school. But my issue is, um, you know, I, I live in the P R S district, and I'm always driving down Avery Street. And you have those discontinuous sidewalks there. So during school time, I've seen kids, you know, it's a very busy street, and they can't keep crossing back and forth. So the kids who are walking to school are walking along the road in the non-sidewake areas to get to school in time because they can't keep crossing the road. So when you make a sidewalk discontinuous, there's no continuity, sometimes defeats the purpose. So if we are to put sidewalks, it's, it should not be about, I feel, about cost cutting, but, you know, what's going to be of the biggest use for our families and for people who are using them? And when we cut it up and switch it back and forth, I feel it defeats the purpose. Because I've seen kids going to T E, walking along dangerous traffic on Avery Street because the sidewalk switches to the other side, and they don't want to cross the road and then cross back.
Thank you, Councilor Alanga, any other questions? Not hearing any, so now my questions. Um, and my question is, is there a safety issue on this road that requires sidewalks for the people that live in this community or walking on that street?
There's no documented pedestrian vehicle strikes on Birch Hill Road that I know of.
Okay, so that's a no, okay, now the sidewalk plan, um, Councilor Kazakowski alluded to the fact that he saw a draft sidewalk plan, is that correct? Is there any way that we could get that, is that a final somewhere? And not just a draft, is there some way that we can get that to us? Or is that on our website, is that on documents somewhere? Has it been adopted, is it final, do we know?
Um, I believe that's a live document, um, that we keep in draft format so that we have some flexibility with it and so that we don't potentially paint ourselves into the liability corner, um, by saying we're going to install sidewalks in X area, and it doesn't happen. And, you know, something terrible happens out there.
Okay, and then the next question, or the next kind of question statement is, in comparison, in my mind, Birch Hill is similar to Orchard Hill, would not be? Or would it be? Because it's kind of a cut through, straight away through, like Orchard Hill Drive and Orchard Hill Drive has sidewalks, is that correct? And Orchard Hill is close to the schools, T E and to Orchard Hill School. So Birch Hill wouldn't be, it's like that eighth, same as Orchard Hill Drive, um, and I know Orchard Hill Drive is a very busy road because folks use that to cut through from Felt to Foster, correct, that way?
I believe Orchard Hill ties into Avery.
Oh, Avery Foster, Avery Foster, thank you, sorry. Um, so, even though they connect to different roads, but it's still a similar through path, would it, would they be considered similar?
Uh, and they are conveyance for traffic, yes.
Okay, and then I think my question is, because we're talking about building the sidewalk on the north side, once they get down to Foster, and they have to head towards the school, they're going to have to cross over Foster to get to the sidewalk? Or are they going to cross over Birch Hill to get to a sidewalk and follow that up? One way or another, they're going to have to cover?
Right, so the sidewalks on Foster are on the west side of the road, which is the intersecting side of Birch Hill.
Oh, it is, okay, but they, but because it's on the north side, they're going to have to cross at the end of Birch Hill to get over to the?
They would have to cross to, to get to Orchard Hill as well.
Okay, okay. Thank you, and, um, Councilor Leidecker, would you like us, thank you, would you like us to, uh, get a consensus on milling out the postcard including the areas that Councilor Evans had suggested to? Would you like us to get a consensus on that, is anyone here? Would you like us to get a consensus on that? Is anyone here? Because we did receive documentation about the public hearing, we had two public hearings, I do believe on this. And I only see one that's in our packet, so we do have the results of another public hearing that we can gather up to. But to directly ask the folks, you know, what they think? Consensus, thumbs up? Councilor Kazakowski?
Madam Mayor, I guess I have a question.
Sure.
What? How, I guess it's more for the director. If we were to go out and delay a resolution or make a final decision on a resolution, if it doesn't happen tonight, but happens a month out or two months out, how does that impact? If you were assuming it would be approved, how would that impact your timeline for construction?
As long as we have consensus by the end of the year, I could foresee construction in 2024. If we don't have consensus for Birch Hill Drive, we'll just move on to the next location and go through the process again.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor King? Councilor Lopez? Councilor Evans? Okay. So we have a consensus to sell, send out a card to the folks on Birch Hill and also on the area that Councilor Evans had mentioned, those other streets which would be connecting Valley View. And I need a bit, a little bit of clarity here and understanding. You brought to us explanation about a referendum that was passed to spend a million dollars on sidewalks, is that correct?
So the 2022 Paving for Progress referendum earmarked $3 million a year for road resurfacing work, $1 million a year for subsurface drainage work, and $1 million a year for sidewalk repair and new installation. Over the course of, what, six, seven years?
Over the course, okay. So there is no rush then with Councilor Kazakowski asking about a timeframe because we have a few more years to be able to work on our sidewalks and drainage and things like that. So with that said, we would then have to go out and bond for that million dollars that we would need to continue this project of the sidewalks over the next couple of years, is pretty much what you were saying, Mr. Maniscalco, right?
Well, the way it would work is basically the town would float the money through our general fund. So we would, we would basically use our piggy bank to pay the million dollars for whatever sidewalks and then reimburse ourselves by issuing that debt. So we can do the project at any time because we have the money in our savings account to do that. And then we also have the authorization to reimburse ourselves afterwards.
Well, to be honest, I'm a little concerned with getting a bond and the interest rates that there are now. I don't know what they, you know, but we do have a AAA rating, so that could help us. So I'm just looking at the future and I'm looking about the budget for next year. I'm sorry, I'm already thinking ahead. And if we issued that bond and what would it cost for our debt for the town's side of things? And what would the interest rate be? I just have to plan ahead.
Yeah, I don't know at this point. I mean, we're
Right.
Typically go out to the market sometime in December to February. So we're a little ways out still till we get there.
Right, right.
I would also, I would also suggest, I mean, we're going to be issuing debt associated with the schools as well.
Right.
So in all actuality, lumping in a million dollars for sidewalks or a few million dollars for roads is, while it's a lot of money to all of us sitting here, in the grand picture of what we're issuing for the schools, it's not that much money.
Well, that's true. But then again, we're talking about a sidewalk compared to a structure. So the other, I think I want to ask too, is why was Birch Hill chosen as a part, as opposed to another busy road or walkable road or a road that may be more narrow that really could use the sidewalks? Either a lot of traffic flow on that street or why was Birch Hill chosen? Is it because someone asked you?
In general, I look at Birch Hill Drive as a sort of low-hanging fruit. It checks all the boxes required for sidewalk installation. There's no sidewalks there. It's next to a school and residents have requested it. There are ample locations that you're talking about in town where sidewalks could go in, but just the constructability of putting them in, like say Long Hill Drive, very narrow road, we have no right-of-way out there and there's a lot of rock, trees and infrastructure that we'd have to work around. So very, very difficult sidewalk project. I figured we would get the ball rolling, per se, with an easy one like Birch Hill Drive and try to get that under our feet before moving on years out on the more difficult ones like say Demming. A lot of, lot of traffic there, but I'm sure you're all aware of the passion of the residents of Demming. And rest assured, you're going to hear residents requesting sidewalks on Demming and you're also going to hear residents that say they don't want them.
Are we also looking at the area around Pleasant Valley School for Walkability, including Ellington Road? Is that a difficulty because that's a state road to put sidewalks?
We would have to work with the state for putting that in. But a lot of the requests I've heard from parents is tying in Clark to Long Hill so that students can access behind there.
And that's, excuse me, that's going down Pleasant Valley, correct?
Yes.
In, yes, and from that area. But we also have the other area heading down Ellington Road towards the other condo developments where the folks walk from there up to Pleasant Valley School on Ellington Roads. So I don't know if that's something that you could look at?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it has been asked, you know, if we had sidewalks there. And also, like in front of the church in 711, heading down towards Pleasant Valley or for the other Dave Wellhollis Pleasant Valley Road area to get up to the school.
Again, happy to bring it to you guys and put together a package much like we do with Birch Hill Road, but just keep in mind that you're going to hear a lot of yays and a lot of nays.
Okay. Other questions? Councilor Serkis?
Yeah, now that money got brought up, I'm just wondering, what's the risk of the cost of the material increasing next year? What's, what's the average increase that you've seen? Let's say in like the last three years, because I know construction has gone up. Just an estimation, I guess?
Rather not talk about that.
You'd rather not talk about that?
I really, I don't have a crystal ball, but obviously the cost of doing any sort of business these days has skyrocketed. Fingers crossed that that trend doesn't continue because we're going to have a hard time getting anything done.
Right.
But you're absolutely right. Every year that we wait to do anything, the cost is just going to go up 10, 15%.
So if we wait, how long? Are you able to secure the funds and materials? If you do have to wait until next year when we approve? Or is it from the point in which construction would start to when you know what it's going to cost?
Say you guys voted on the resolution tonight, we would release the consultant to, you know, finish the drawings so they're biddable. We put it out to bid probably in November and be able to secure a contractor with those prices in November. If we wait, we'll be doing that in March?
Right.
Or not at all.
Got it, thank you.
It's the beginning of September. Is there any way that we can get that notification out to the residents very quickly and get it back?
I will get right on it tomorrow. And I had a little idea, maybe we could use a RF, what are those little block photos? Send that out to the residents. They can take a picture of it. It'll all be digitized and they can fill out the survey that way, rather than having to mail something back.
Could you respond back to us or report back to us at the second meeting of September, please, if you have any returns?
You know, I would like to give the residents a little bit more time than two weeks, just to get a better consensus of the data.
Sure, how's the first meeting in October?
Very good.
Okay. And if we, we'd like to postpone the information this evening. Councilor Lydecker?
Just a follow-up question with regards to, you know, maybe costs rising if we delay on Birch Hill. But we're not delaying the sidewalk plan, correct? We just may be moving to whatever the next identified target is. So we're not setting ourselves up to have an astronomical cost increase. We're just moving on to the next location and attempting to put the sidewalks there, correct? It's not Birch Hill now and nothing. It's just if we're holding off on Birch Hill, we're going to start implementing wherever the next identified location is, correct?
So each location's cost is unique. But every month that we wait on, you know, releasing the Birch Hill project, you know, you're running the risk of it costing more.
But given the fact that we are going to be going out to the residents now and that may cause a delay, so I'm assuming you're going to start identifying and putting a plan together for whatever the next project is so we can kind of keep moving the sidewalk plan forward? Is that the intention?
Indeed.
Okay, thank you.
Is there another identifiable area for sidewalks?
There, there's all sorts of locations around town that I can come and propose sidewalks for you guys. I just want to reiterate that you are going to have the same pushback pretty much everywhere in town by residents that don't want sidewalks versus residents that do. To be honest, it takes a little bit of wind out of my sails when we go and put all this effort into a project and bring it forth and, you know, it kind of peters out. But that's what our job is and we'll, we'll come with another proposal for another location. Most likely probably Demming with all the activity that's going on there. And we'll, we'll see what happens.
Okay, so we'll see you in October?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you. Sorry. And moving on is 12B, the Charter Revision Commission, and that's our reference Exhibit A. Our Attorney Corilla and Mr. Maniscalco, please.
So good evening. In your package is, attached to the agenda is Exhibit A. It's a draft resolution that would be a form of resolution that would hit all the requirements for the adoption of a charter revision commission being formed by your town council. I don't know if you saw the electronic version of this. It had comments attached to the side. So I don't see that in the draft printed agenda that you have yet.
Flip it over. There's some comments on the back. I'm not sure if that's the
No.
If there's more than that.
The version that's the Okay. Oh, it seems like you have it, okay. So again, this is just a form of resolution. And some of the things that you need to consider when starting to think about forming a charter revision commission are kind of listed there as follows. First, you have to decide how many members you want on the commission. The statute says between five to 15. This draft resolution, this is from another town that I work with, had nine in their town. But you can choose anywhere between five and 15. You should be aware when appointing people to the Charter Revision Commission, you have to be aware of minority representation rules under 9-167A. Only so many members of a particular political party can be appointed. So you can't have a majority, more than a majority on there of one political party. Also, you should be aware of the fact, there was a question about whether sitting council members can be on the Charter Revision Commission. Under your charter, the answer is no. Sitting council members cannot serve on other elected or appointed committees or commissions. Having said that, if one of you wants to be on there and you want to appoint them and you know you're not running again for council, that's possible, right? So take that into consideration. And the town council has the ability and probably the, you would want to direct the Charter Revision Commission as to what topics you want them to take up and consider. So listed here, items one through, I think, seven on this draft agenda were the issues for that particular town that this was drafted off of. And, you know, these are the types of issues when you go through your agenda, you can direct the Charter Revision Commission to take a look and, you know, take public comment and hear and, you know, draft revisions to those particular items. The town council is not obligated to do that. But if you do do it, the town, the Charter Revision Commission is obligated to address those issues. The Charter Revision Commission is not limited to those, however, they can take up their own items and their own topics when reviewing the charter. Similarly, when they report back to you, you're not obligated to adopt every single one of their revisions. Okay? So there's some back and forth there. Finally, there was, there's a timeline that all this has to take place by. And you'll see in the last paragraph there on the second page, be it resolved, to have them submit their draft report to the town clerk no later than blank. Under the statute, you have 16 months, or they have 16 months. You should direct them to report no later than 16 months or earlier. Once the Charter Revision Commission submits its draft report to the town clerk for your consideration, you have 180 days broken up into a series of steps that we don't have to go over right now. But there was another memo, I think, that they saw. There was another memo that spells out the timeline of that. But in roughly, roughly, you have 180 days, once the Charter Revision Commission completes its work, to go through a series of public hearings and you address it and you decide which portions of that you want to ultimately send to the public by way of a referendum. And the timeline for that is up to 15 months after you've adopted the final revisions. 15 months. So you have a long period of time here. You have a lot of room to work with. But there are specific timelines along the way that you have to be cognizant of. I'll stop there. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? The town attorney? Councilor Lydecker?
Just very briefly, you did mention that there is a specific statute as to the number of commission members from each party. What is that statute?
It's 9-167A, I believe.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the town attorney? Councilor Kazakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a few questions. First, regarding the number of members of the Charter Revision Commission. You threw in nine because that's a community that you've worked with before. How does that particular community relate to South Windsor as far as population size?
Very different. It's actually much smaller. It's about a 5,000-person community with a town selectman form of government, first selectman and two other selectmen. So it's very different, very smaller in size. They look at their charter probably, you know, if they've looked at it three times in the last 10 years and they revised it. So they're very hands-on in doing it.
Is it probably the same nine people that have looked at it?
Yes. Exactly.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Do, do the, do the members of the commission have to be electors of the town?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And that's in the statute?
That's in the statute.
Okay. And as far as the, the recommended issues to be addressed, you listed seven here.
Those were issues, those were issues related to that town, that charter. There are some similarities. Yeah, very specific to that town.
Okay, then I'll yield to that conversation. And then my last question is, just for clarification, the final approval would go to referendum?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not a council decision?
Well, what goes to referendum is the council's decision. What, what charter revisions and what the nature of that is and what the language is ultimately rests with the town council to send to the charter, to send to referendum. But ultimately, the yea or nay on that as a group, townspeople at a referendum can't pick and choose line items. You do that.
You do, okay, so
And then you send the whole package out to referendum.
And what would happen if the, if it fails referendum?
Then your charter remains as it currently is drafted.
Okay, and there's no, and would it be, if you wanted to push or to revise, if the council wanted to revise the recommendations, if I may, would it have to start all over?
If it failed referendum, it would have to start all over, right?
Thank you.
Councilor Evans?
Thank you. So by the term elector, you mean people on the commission?
I'm sorry, I can't
By, by the term elector, we're talking about people on the commission. Because also in the wording, it does say no more than one-third may be hold public office. So they are the commission members. So, they are the commission members, not elected officials.
Wait, go back and explain...
I don't know if I follow your, your question.
So, I just want to clarify that the term elector is not us elected.
No, no.
It is the people electors to the commission.
An elector is a, a member of the public who is registered to vote. There's an elector.
And in our state, this, the information that we received, the statutory requirements, it says no more, where is it? Sorry. No more than one-third of the commission members may hold any public office. So, that's not in here, in, in the, the draft, but that's in the statute.
That's correct.
So, one-third of nine, one-third of five, one-third of fifteen can be elected, but not from the council.
Uh, one-third of the Charter Revision members can be members of a, uh, an elect, can be elected and hold public office, okay?
But not us.
You cannot serve, a, a sitting town council member cannot serve on the Charter Revision Commission for really two reasons. One, your charter prohibits it. That's, I probably should just stop right there. The other reason is, by statute, you're the body that approves the recommendations of the commission and you have a role to play and it's not going through the charter and figuring it all out and coming up with the language and submitting it to the town council. You're the town council, you have the final say on it once the commission does its work. So, those are the two reasons why you, a sitting town council member cannot serve on the Charter Revision Commission.
Perfect. Just wanted clarification on that. But would it make sense for us to have a council liaison to the Charter Review Commission to kind of make sure that the commission has any questions or wants to see if they're on the right track? Is that something we could do is add a council liaison or would that kind of conflict with the role of the commission?
I, I know you have council liaisons to other town commissions to, for purposes of communication and you all stay on, on top of it. I don't like it in this instance because the Charter Revision Commission has a particular role to play. It has its own statutory criteria, it has its own function, and it does ultimately report to you once the project is complete. It doesn't, uh, need to report to you along the way, uh, doesn't need to have your input along the way. It's set forth by statute how this works. And so, I understand the need and, uh, any one of you could, you know, be appointed to go and watch and listen to those, um, Charter Revision Commission meetings and report back to the town council how things are going. That's appropriate, but it's not appropriate for a town council member to participate in those discussions or meetings even as a liaison. So, I don't like it for that reason.
Okay. I was just thinking it would be helpful, I understand that, but I'm just, was thinking it might be helpful to kind of make sure that they understand they're on the right path, like that they're, you know, because it's ultimately, it's going to come with council. So, they, they would need the council approval, so it would be like a communication. Totally understand. Um, my only other question is that in the draft, the term minority representation is used. Um, in the state statute, it uses the term bare majority. Sorry, I don't have my glasses.
Were you reading the minority one, please?
Um, so in...
Referencing the draft.
In the, in the draft, it's the bottom paragraph on page one, number three, minority representation rules.
Got it.
As well as in the column on page one, the note, it says, and remember minority representation rules.
Got it.
Um, in the statutory requirements, it uses, uh, I only have a picture of it, I don't have a, it uses, can't find it now, but the term is, i- in the state statute, it was bare majority. So, are those interchangeable?
Well, I think...
Here it is. The last paragraph says, and not more than a bare majority shall be members of any one political party.
Are you looking at nine dash one sixty-seven A?
I think it's General Statute seven dash one ninety A, yes.
That's, that's a different statute. Nine dash one sixty-seven A is the statute that requires that only, uh, it's not just a bare majority, it's, it's certain numbers. It's so, for a five-person commission, the maximum amount from one party can be four, all right? For, for a seven-member commission, the maximum can, uh, from any one party can be five. Uh, for a nine-member commission, the maximum majority can be six, all right? And so, that's the statute that limits the amount, uh, the number of members from one political party on any particular board or commission, okay? So, you have to be cognizant of that when appointing members to this commission and you can't cross those thresholds depending on how many people you choose to put on the commission. So, if you have a five-member commission, then the maximum amount from any one party can be four under state law. Nine dash one sixty-seven A is the statute that talks about that, and that's called minority representation. And that's why the colloquialism for what we're talking about is minority representation rules. It's the heading of that statute.
Are we also beholden to seven dash one ninety A? Because that states shall be no, shall be member, no more than a bare majority.
Yes.
So, so if we have five...
Seven dash one ninety A is the Charter Revision statutes, yes.
So, we would, it supersedes the four out of five, it would be three out of five.
Are you saying they conflict?
No, I'm just saying, it's not really statute nine point one six seven A because that would allow, if you had five, you could have four of one party. Based on the state statute, the seven dash one ninety A, that's a bare majority. If there were five, we could only have three.
And now the, the, I'm sorry, the nine one six seven A comes from where? What statute?
That is, uh...
State statute, right?
That is the one in here.
Is that not also a state statute? I will look, or no? I'm just trying, it sounds, uh...
Am I totally misunderstanding? What is that?
No, I think there's two, two...
They're all state statutes.
Okay, thank you. No, I, it's not referenced to, I'm saying it's not charter statute, it's state statute. So, what I'm saying is, it sounds to me as they're conflicting with each other.
Right. One is saying we can have three, the other's saying we can have four out of five.
I'm reading through nine dash one sixty-seven A, if you want to give me a minute. There may be a carve-out for Charter Revision Commissions that I just have to take a look at. But I will tell you, in either event, you have to be cognizant of the statutes about how many people from a particular party you can appoint, and I will get you some clarity as to whether it, well, depending on how many people you want to appoint, right? So, if you're telling me five, I'll let you know if it's three or four from any one political party. If you're telling me seven, I'll let you know what the number is. Um, I'm trying to see if there's a carve-out for Charter Revision Commissions, and it's not jumping off the page of me here, but I will take a look at that. It's a good point.
So, the one that, that we have from last meeting was the twenty twenty-three South Windsor Charter Revision Commission Statutory Requirements CGS Chapter ninety-nine.
Great, that's seven dash one ninety.
That's what?
Chapter ninety-nine of the Connecticut General Statutes. Starts with section seven dash one ninety.
Yes. So, this one is saying bare majority, but the example you gave us is giving us minority representation. So, I was just looking for clarity on that because they seem to tell us two different things. My only other question was, and I think you answered it, is I don't know that all of these examples fit South Windsor or maybe they need to be tweaked. How important is it to have those in there? The only importance is that then the commission must review them versus if they're not in here, we can give them to them, but they do not have to. Like, we could submit a recommendation.
If you submit a recommendation to them as, in the body of the resolution, they must address it.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
If you submit a recommendation to them in the body of this resolution, right? They must address it.
So, like, for example, we have a whole list of recommendations here. These, we would not list every single one of these.
It's up to you whether or not you want them to, to address them.
Or would they get this list to consider?
That's up to us. While we give them.
Well, that's what I'm just, I'm trying to clarify the importance of this list.
Just take that list and add it as a, yeah. You can, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we picked up along the way.
You can, you can just attach, you can, you can attach the list as part of the resolution if that's, if that's what you want to do.
All right. That's all I have for questions. I just think then we'll have to really finalize this list for next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Evans. Uh, Councilor Kazakowski?
Um, I believe, uh...
Oh, I'm sorry, Council, Syracuse.
Um, call me, call me crazy, but opening the charter, I believe, is a community issue, not a, like, certain political party issue or, or what have you. I love the nine number. Um, I think it allows us to, the nine of us, to come up with, uh, truly bipartisan, uh, uh, commission here. Um, I may be wrong, but can, can we elect unaffiliated folks to this? So, you know, three, three Republicans, three Democrats, three unaffiliated. Um, puts all the statutes aside and it allows, you know, a, a commission to really get things done in a, in a bipartisan manner. Um, that's just, that's just my thoughts there. Uh, do you see that nine number as a, as a solid number for a town like ours or...
I think in any town, whether it's nine or seven or five, it's about the people that you appoint and how committed they are to the process. And so, I don't think it, it really has to do with the number as much as it is with how dedicated those people are going to be to seeing this through. It's kind, quite a lengthy process in your list, from what I've seen, is quite a lengthy list. So, there's a lot of work to be done there. Um, perhaps nine or, or even eleven might be appropriate, given the fact that you have quite a bit of work to do and maybe they could divide up the work. But if you have five or seven really dedicated, hard-working people, you could probably do it that way as well. I think it all, it all depends on who you appoint.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilor Kazakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just a point of clarification, if we, if we were to list a, a list of topics that, um, the commission must address, using your words, can, um, the recommendation coming out of that commission be do nothing with it?
Yep, that could be their call.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is there, is there any other questions concerning this? Oh, I'd like to take this approach a little bit to, um, look at the draft resolution that we have before, so if we can go section by section, just so you'll be able to draft something up with some more definitive information for us for our next meeting.
Thank you. That would be helpful.
Uh, let's, let us move forward with creating something. So, if we could look at the resolution, if everyone could, as a discussion item, um, defining the cha, the charge of the Charter Review Commission and appointment of members to said commission is the way that you want to go with the statement of this? The title?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. And then the pursuant to section seven dash, uh, one ninety, and then also you might want to include the nine, one sixty-seven A in there, I'm thinking, because that's what we've heard and you referenced that, so you might want to include that?
I'll, I'll come up with the right answer on that, all right? Let me, let me take a look at that.
Right. And then we get to the point of the nine-member Charter Revision, uh, consisting of the nine electors of the town. So, um, if we can get, we don't have to vote on this this evening, but if we can just go around the room, if, if you guys have a suggestion on what you would like to see and that will give us where we're headed with this or have some good conversation for the next meeting. Um, Councilor Longo, members?
That we appoint to the commission. They should be able to make, you know, really nuanced and also wise decisions. So, um, I'm not that fixated on the number, but I would definitely expect, you know, people of re- repute, people who have experience in town governance and also, yeah.
Well, I'm asking everyone if, if they have a preference for a number for the membership. So, if you have a number that you could give me, I'd appreciate it.
Um, five to seven.
Okay. Councilor Evans?
Um, I, I think my preference would be five. Um, knowing how commissions and boards have had difficulty getting quorums, I think working with five solid numbers is to benefit of the commission. Um, they need three people to be able to meet. Um, I also have had, in the past, I have made really strong efforts to be as nonpartisan or equal representation as possible in the past, um, and it has been shown to me that that does not always work out to the benefit of the town. Not saying the nonpartisan part of the commissions, but just how some of the representation has worked out. Um, and in that case, I, I, I'm hesitant to do like a three, 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 um, so I would be in favor of five.
Thank you. Councilor Lopez?
Yeah, I also vote for five.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor King?
Thank you, sir. Uh, I agree with Councilor Longo, uh, in the sense that, you know, looking up to just to determine a quorum, I think, uh, it does come down to the quality, but my biggest concern is, once this process gets started, we're talking about two years of work roughly, period. So, I don't care who the individuals are, it would almost, almost seem counterintuitive to have it be too large, just because, heaven forbid, what's a, you know what, I'll just ask the question, so you can just call me stupid. So, for, if it was a nine member, what's the quorum?
What's the quorum? It would be five.
But, so, so you have to have five. Okay. So, if we don't have five that show up, what happens when this timeline starts, this sixteen-month timeline? What happens?
If they fail to, to do their job, right?
Yeah, just say, just, yep, just say they don't have a quorum, they can't meet.
Can't meet. Well, the meeting goes to the, you know, the next meeting until they do have a quorum and maybe is dragged out. At some point, the timeline comes up and if they haven't done their job by the timeline, the Charter Revision fails. It just ends.
Okay. So, that's, that's my, that's my concern, is having it too large. Um, but I, I get it. I, I understand. Um, yeah, I'm leaning more towards seven, if I have to get in, if, give a number now.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Kazakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would be fine with nine. I could be comfortable-ish with going down to seven. Um, the reason why I like, uh, more members, first, I think, on a commission like this where it is, it has a very defined charge, a very limited timeframe, and a very much, you know, a hu- hu- large responsibility and, you know, a lot of, um, ha, can have a lot of impact on a town, I think that the members that are appointed to this committee will be diligent and want to attend the meetings and, and, and will attend and participate because that's, that's kind of the point. Um, so, I think, I don't think we'd have a problem if we were to fill all nine or seven spots, that, um, we would have quorum issues. Um, also, having more members provides more opportunities to provide expertise in certain areas. Um, I would, um, we're not, we're not talking about who are filling the spots right now, but it'd be nice to have somebody that's an expert of the, you know, le- legalities of these types of, uh, um, these, um, chart, you know, the, the provisions of the charter that they're going to be looking at. Um, it'd be nice to have maybe some people that are very familiar with the workings of the town, maybe there's some retired employees that are familiar and would like, you know, that could provide some valuable input. Um, there could be some members of the public that are experts in finance or experts in other areas that can be impacted by the Charter Revision. So, I'm in favor of a larger, um, larger committee, um, nine, possibly seven.
Thank you. Sure.
Before you go, how many did we have on the strategic planning committee? We must have had like, like twelve?
We had nine or eleven.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Councilor Lydecker?
I think if I had to put a number on it, I'd probably be comfortable with seven. Um, I like the idea of a few extra members. I think it is also, you know, quality. Um, I don't want to get bogged down in Republican versus Democrat, though. We did spend some time about that. I think we also have to remember, we have two council members who are neither. We need to make sure that they are included. They need to have a voice in this as well. Um, so, it's not just unaffiliated, it's the United Community Party, the Democrats, the Republicans, the independents. Um, so I think, to me, it's more the quality of who we're putting on, the backgrounds. Um, but I'm also going to put a lot of faith in the citizens who come forward and who are asking for this. I mean, the, the people who came forward and put their name in... I mean, the, the people who came forward and put their name in for strategic planning, they were phenomenal, and they were dedicated. And I think that's what we're looking for, and we're not looking for the political aspects of this. So, I'm probably leaning towards seven.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Syracuse, you stated nine. Are you sticking with that?
Yeah, I like nine, and I agree. I know down in my mind, the people that we put forth are going to be extremely dedicated. I like nine, because the quorum's at five, so you've got five solid people in the room, uh, there, no matter what, they're getting the job done. Um, Counselor King, uh, I understand your reservations with a higher number, but I kind of feel the opposite way with those same reservations. So, I think we're both thinking the same way, but in the opposite. So, regardless, you know, the importance is we get the right people in there, and, yeah, I like nine. That's, that's my number.
Thank you. Okay, I just went around the room and asked everybody. You didn't give me a number. Anitha, do you have one?
I'm comfortable with the middle number, seven.
Thank you. And Counselor Merrick, you prefer nine, but you'll go with seven? Okay. We have five sevens, and we have one, two, three fives, and one nine. So, it looks like the seven would be the, the sweet number for everybody, right in the middle. And the caucus for that, or quorum for that would be four, correct? So, that would be four folks?
Right, quorum for that would be four, and I just checked on the statutes and the discrepancy between seven-one-ninety and nine-dash-one-sixty-seven. Seven-one-ninety controls, because that's the charter revision statute. So, no more than a bare majority shall be from any one political party. So, in your case, for seven, no more than, uh, a bare majority, four, right, shall be from one political party.
Good. Out of a seven group?
Out of the seven.
It'd be four, yes. I mean, that's pretty much standard, that's, okay. Um, so, now, that's a consensus on the number is number seven, so that's where we'll go with that. Um, can I, can, I think the best way to do this would, for us to go down to look at this, and if we have any ideas or suggestions, to be able to email them to, um, the town attorney. Um, from our own homes, we have a copy of this that was sent to us.
Sure, you want a cop, you want the rev, resolution, or are you looking at the list of items to be considered?
This, with the draft that you've given us, okay, for the wording on this draft?
Sure.
Um, and if, if we all have ideas or suggestions about this draft, to get back to him on that, instead of me going through each one of these this evening. I do have a question, um, concerning, excuse me. Item number five in the back. Review the powers, duties, and jurisdiction of all town charter-mandated boards, commissions, and agencies. I understand that, because that's charter-mandated, that's what we have to have, as well as those created outside the town charter, with the consideration of possible amendment consolidation or elimination. Uh, personally, I would like to eliminate that, because that's just a lot of extra work that isn't charter-related.
Right, just so we're clear, these seven items were related to entirely different town and entirely different charter.
Correct, I'm just saying, I'm going off of your draft here, and if, if, I mean, that's my suggestion, is to eliminate that, create it outside of the town charter. That's more work than they have to do.
Yeah, my intention is to eliminate items one through seven in their entirety at this point, because that is really related to an entirely different town, an entirely different charter.
Got you, so I don't have to ask about the treasurer, because it's, got you, thank you, okay. I'm sorry, yes, please.
Thank you. Um, if, before we go through the exercise of seeing if, like, one through seven, or any other, um, things that we'd want to put on there, um, I think it, uh, have, be good to have a discussion to see if we want to put any at all, and leave it open, completely open-ended, versus having targeted areas.
Well, as you said, this is a draft.
Yeah.
This is an example from another town. It's not a draft, it's an example from another town. So, if you could write us up a draft, Attorney Corella, concerning South Windsor, okay? Instead of, this is, this is an example from another town, but concerning South Windsor, like, item A, it makes sense right there, item A is, uh, you know, the first paragraph. Um, you know, in going down, filling the vacancies of the elected positions. I mean, if you can write us a draft and send us a draft, so we can review that, instead of this, but how it would look for the town of South Windsor. And also, if we could, counselors, go through the list of proposed changes here, um, that we have. Um, I will tell you that, um, all of these were compiled by Debbie, myself, and past counselors, that we found discrepancies within the charter with. Um, so we can attach this whole list, and they can review them. And if they don't find anything to change on it, they don't have to change on it, correct? If they find something that needs to be changed, they can change it, right?
That's correct.
So, it's best to give them the whole list and say, here you go, and let us know what you think. Instead of us eliminating it and us doing the work with the charter.
Okay, it's your prerogative. You have the obliga, you have the, uh, the ability to direct the commission to address certain topics.
Thank you.
I will, yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Evans?
Um, the only question is, if we are, this has specific members' names on it. If we were to put someone on this commission who was then elected to office, do we have to reapprove the resolution?
No, they, they, you would just have to replace them, right? They would, they would no longer be eligible to hold.
And that's going to be written in your draft that you sent to us concerning South Windsor? That would be great if you could.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Longo?
Um, I just had a question. I mean, we, I see here a list of proposed revisions to the charter. Um, so this is coming from the town council, right?
This came from, um, our past town clerk, Debbie, and myself, and other council members that we found along the way. Uh, since two thousand nineteen, I believe, is that correct? I believe it's way back, twenty-twenty is here, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, October twenty nineteen, yes.
Okay.
So, this is what we found along the way, as we were going through, and we found discrepancies, uh, things that could be changed in the charter.
So, you know, I'm just thinking about, um, Counselor Syracuse's comment about this being a community, um, uh, you know, community involvement. Um, so can the Charter Revision Commission get, like, you know, um, let's say there is a certain minority community, not a minority party, but, you know, who thinks that the charter does not reflect the current, um, you know, demographics of the town, and the language is not appropriate? Now, can they, uh, you know, give a recommendation to the, um, Charter Revision Commission? And, you know, does it have to be formal or informal?
So, the Charter Revision Commission holds a number of public hearings, so they're required to hold at least two. One before they start their substantive work, and then one before they issue their final report. They can hold other, uh, public hearings or meeting, they're, if you're to have public meetings. They can hold other public hearings where the public can have input along the way. So, yes, the public is able to participate in this, at least, at least twice by mandated, by statute.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor King?
The only question I have is, you know, I might have misheard it, but say, for example, so we, we hand over this list, whatever. These, all of these have to be in the initial resolution, is that what you said?
If, right, if you want to require the commission to take up a certain topic or language in the existing charter, it must be directed by, by you to them through this resolution. You can attach a list, you, you, my suggestion, given the size of this list.
That's what I was asking.
We're not going to spell it out in the resolution, we'll attach the list.
That's what I was asking.
This is a pretty comprehensive list that's been kind of talked about over the last, looks like, three years.
No, 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 we're good, we're good.
I would, I would say, attached here, too.
Yep.
Attach it as.
I got you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Not hearing any? Could you please write up a, a draft and send it to us, so then we can respond back? Thank you so much, and, and I look forward to attaching this list, because these are items that we found along the way. But, um, I appreciate it. Okay, no other questions, moving on. We have the park and recreation facility, um, discussion item, dissolving of the park and recreation facility planning and implementation, implementation committee. And Mr. Meniskovko, and, uh, Attorney Corella?
Yeah, so this is a follow-up from our last meeting, where we had a motion, a resolution drafted that both did two things. One dissolved the existing park and recreation facility planning and implementation committee, and then another resolution that, um, uh, authorized the Public Building Commission to select a new location for the Parks and Recreation Department offices. We had that in the body of one resolution last meeting. Through discussion with the town council, it was clear that you wanted to separate those two. One, clearly dissolving the former committee, and the other resolution directing the Public Works, Public Building Commission to find a new location for the Parks and Recreation Department. So, that's what you really have before you. And the body of that resolution in, um, in, under item D, is, is that part that speaks to the dissolution of the Parks and Recreation Facility Planning and Implementation Committee. The only thing that I would change there is the last paragraph of that resolution should read, "Now therefore be it resolved", as opposed to whereas. So, on item D, the last paragraph should start with the words, "Now therefore be it resolved".
And if we want to change this along the way, sir, we would be able to do that in our discussion after it's read?
You, you guys can all, yes, you can always amend the resolution by, by amendment.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions, or the town attorney, before we move on? Counselor Evans?
Mine are only changes to the resolution, so that would be the next.
Yeah, during the resolution, yeah. Any other questions? Not seeing any, alright, let's move on, please, to twelve D. Counselor Evans?
Twelve D, resolution dissolving the Park and Recreation Facility and Implementation Committee. Whereas the South Windsor Town Council previously approved a resolution creating a Park and Recreation Facility Planning and Implementation Committee at their December sixth, twenty-twenty-one town council meeting. And whereas the town council, South Windsor Town Council approved a subsequent resolution at their February seventh, twenty-twenty-two meeting, amending the res, original resolution, forming a Park and Recreation Facility Planning and Implementation Committee. And whereas a purpose in forming the Park and Recreation Facility and Implementation Committee was among others to identify and vet locations for the South Windsor Park and Recreation Department offices as a result of its prior location in Wapping School being used by the Board of Education to meet the needs of the increased student population expected by July one, twenty-twenty-three. And whereas the Sou, the town council has directed the Public Building Commission to coordinate with Parks and Recreation Commission and Parks and Recreation Department to identify possible sites and building locations for the Park and Recreation Department offices. Whereas the purposes of the Park and Recreation Facility Planning and Implementation Committee dated December sixth, twenty-twenty-one, and further amended on February seventh, twenty-twenty-two, are completed, and the Park and Recreation Facility Planning and Implementation Committee is hereby rescinded, and that committee is hereby dissolved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any, um, item, uh, discussion, discussion, deletions, corrections, additions, please? Please change that last paragraph to where it says, "Now therefore be it resolved", as the town attorney has suggested, instead of whereas. Someone needs to make a motion, a friendly amendment to that, based off the town attorney's. Counselor Lydecker?
I move to make a friendly amendment that the last paragraph, instead of whereas, be now therefore be it resolved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
May I make a second friendly amendment? Or request information on?
Please, it's a discussion item, absolutely.
The second to last paragraph, the town council has directed the Public Building Commission to coordinate with Parks and Rec. Does that need to be in there, because I think now we're again conflating the two? I think we just need to dissolve, and then we have our second resolution where we are going to direct the PBC. So, my friendly amendment would be to remove that paragraph.
Is there a second on that, or discussion on that?
Um, discussion is that, I, I don't think we can say it, because we haven't done it.
Well, is there a second on that amendment?
Then, yes, second.
So, there's a second, and now we can have a discussion on that? And so, on that amendment, any discussion? Counselor Evans?
My second, my discussion is that we have not actually done this. Um, so I don't think we can say this in the resolution, because we have not actually directed Public Building Commission to do this yet. Um, I also think that they should be kept completely separate, um, rather than being a part of the ending of the committee.
So, any other discussion? Not hearing any. Counselor Kazakowski, do you want to jump in your light side, or you want to wait?
Oh, I want to.
Okay, you want to wait? I thought so. Okay, so all those in favor on removing that third, is it the third paragraph? The one before the last paragraph?
Second to last.
Second to last. One, two, three, four, the fourth whereas, removing the fourth whereas paragraph. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion carries, thank you. And now, Counselor Kazakowski?
I guess, I guess I just have some just general, overall comments. I don't have a, um, amendment. Um, I just want to first thank the committee members that served on the, on the Parks and Rec Facilities Planning Committee. Um, it's a great volunteer effort on their part, um, for providing the recommendations, um, to the council that they did. Um, both short-term, midterm, and, and long-term recommendations. Um, I can buy into the premise that, um, that their work is done, and can, should be picked up by the Public Building Committee. Um, there was a premise that was, um, presented, um, earlier in a memo from the town attorney about, um, this committee being formed illegally, as it was done with by resolution, not by charter. Um, I want to just ma, base a decision not on that premise, because, um, we have multiple committees, um, throughout the town that have not been, uh, created by ord, by ordinance, as opposed to, um, committee. So, um, with that aside, I'll, you know, be happily to vote for it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, and more comments? Counselor Evans?
Um, so I, I, this committee did a lot of work. They, they brought in a lot of great information. They were very dedicated. Um, but based on my knowledge of this committee, the word "completed" to me is not accurate. The reason we are, um, dissolving this commission, committee, is because it is not in compliance with the South Windsor Charter. Um, so, in my opinion, we should not be using the word "completed". We should be saying that it is not in compliance with South Windsor Charter, or however we want to say it.
Where is that, and what paragraph, please?
The last paragraph, where it says, in the second line, the last word is "completed". Technically, the committee was tasked with bringing forth a plan to referendum, and to be dissolved based on passage or failure of said referendum.
I don't even understand why the word "completed" is in there. If you read the sentence, it doesn't address anything. The word is saying "completed", what is it addressing?
Saying that they have done, they have completed what they were tasked to do.
Can we say it is not able to be completed?
Sure.
And then, that kind of takes any negative inference out about compliance, what have you, but also still gives homage to the people who worked so diligently getting us the initial information?
I think that serves its purpose. I just want it to be true, like, call a spade a spade. I mean, I'd rather.
You want to make a friendly amendment to that?
Be honest with that.
Sure.
Can I make a friendly amendment? In the last paragraph, instead of "are completed", say "not able to be completed"?
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Not hearing any, all those, oh, um, wait, wait, finger's going down. Hang on. Counselor Kazakowski?
I think that's just as more, as awkward as the word "completed". I don't know, in my, in my practice, is if the sentence doesn't work, you blow it up and you, and you rewrite it. I think maybe, instead of using, just defining what the purpose is, um, hinging, hinging that paragraph on the purpose of the committee, I think more just put the emphasis that it existed, and it did something, and we acknowledge it. And then dissolved.
If I can.
Oh, absolutely, go ahead.
In some sense, just thanking them for their service, the members of the committee, and just dissolving it.
That's, I like that, too.
I don't think we need to, oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping in. No, go ahead, you good? Merrick?
Um, yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay, alright, so, um, wait, kid, do you want to withdraw your, your?
Yes, I will, I will.
Okay, thank you. Um, Madam Mayor, make a.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion to, uh, Okay, I make a motion to, uh, amend the, um, last paragraph to read "now therefore be it resolved." Um, the Town Council thanks the Parks and Recreation Facility Planning and Implementation Committee for their work and dedication to the town of South Windsor, and therefore hereby rescind, and therefore the committee is hereby dissolved.
Rescinded and that the committee is hereby resolved, just use the last part of the sentence. Did we get that? Counselor, uh, Counselor, really, really, Clerk of the Council, Palma, do you get all that? Okay. If, uh, is there a second on that amendment, please? Okay. Any discussion on that amendment? I think it sounds very pretty. Thank you. Good job. All those in favor on that amendment? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any. Thank you. That motion carries. So we're all set with that, right, Amanda? You got all that? Okay. So now that we're back to, uh, the amended resolution, are we done with any of the amendments, friendly amendments, and now we can go forward with the vote on the amended resolution, please? Any more discussion on it? Not hearing any? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any. Thank you. The motion carries. Item 13, New Business Discussion Item, Senior Tax Freeze and the Credit Program. We have our staff here, Ms. Mary Huda and Jennifer Holinsky Shirley, please. Mr. Maniscalco.
Yeah, um, unfortunately, Ms. Holinsky Shirley had to leave due to a family emergency, so, uh, we're thankful that we have our associate here, uh, to help us with it, Ms. Mary Huda.
Thank you, Mary, for being here. Appreciate it. Okay, so, um, I had asked, and I brought this up, I had asked, uh, Mr. Maniscalco to get ahold of Ms. Huda, and I've also spoken to her myself, because many of the residents of our community, of our senior population, have asked me, what about a senior freeze? And I want to have a discussion item here that folks can understand. A senior tax freeze, not a senior freeze, right? We're not freezing our seniors, a senior tax freeze, thank you. The elderly freeze, local option elderly freeze. So, um, I don't have a specific answer as to why we don't have a senior, um, tax freeze. I do know that our town does have a senior tax credit program. I'm saying that correctly, right? Senior tax credit program. And the senior tax freeze is something totally different. If, I'm looking into that, basically. What would that look like for our town if we were to do a senior tax freeze? Because that's what I'm being questioned about all the time, as I'm sure the rest of us council members are, too. So if you could give us a hand to understand the documents that you sent to us and help us to understand where we are, what we are, what the numbers would look like, I'd appreciate that.
I can certainly do my best, Mayor, and I'm happy that the, uh, town attorney is here this evening because there's a lot of, um, legal-
Absolutely.
-information in the municipal option. As you very correctly stated, the, the town does have a, uh, local option senior tax benefit. We actually have three different local option senior tax benefits. This would be a completely different, um, local option that the Town Council could certainly choose to explore, research, adopt. Um, there are a lot of factors that go into it, um, but there are some very standard pieces that are set by state statute. Um, the age requirement and the income requirement are primary among those, too. So the age limit of 65 is the minimum age. It could be anywhere from 65 to 80, which I believe is one of the other towns in Hartford County has adopted that. The other really important component is the income levels, and those are the same as the current state program, as well as the local match that we have already adopted since 1998. So I kind of, in summary to that, the people that would be affected by the local option freeze are the same 242 households that are currently getting both the state and the local option match.
240 households?
242.
242 in our town presently?
Currently.
Use the tax credit?
Use the state tax credit and then the additional local option tax credit.
Local option, okay. I just want to general, you know, the overall numbers here. Go ahead.
So that's, those are kind of the, the basic parameters. There's lots of, lots of other pieces that can and, and could go into a local option that the, um, council could consider. As I mentioned, the years, an age requirement, um, there could be a years of residency requirement in terms of how long the, the members of the household have been residents of town of South Windsor. There can be asset limits. Um, the state does set the income limits, and that's a gross income on an annual basis. Um, and the part that, uh, Ms. Shirley Holinsky was going to delve into more was, there's also a component of whether you would put a lien and/or allow a deferral of the taxes, um, meaning that anything that would be frozen, that would be lower than the normal tax rate, could be leaned or, or collected at a future date.
When the home is sold?
Correct.
Okay.
The other option to consider would be a sunset clause. If the council decided that they wanted to try and adopt or adopt a local option, they could put it in place for three years, five years. I don't believe there's a statutory limit on that, no. So that would be something you could come back and reevaluate. Um, my other suggestion, or I have a couple of recommendations, but, is that there are already in the three existing local options, there are, um, options to either increase the monetary value of those credits and/or the factor that goes along with those credits.
Did we not do that recently? Two years ago, I thought?
The factor has been reviewed, uh, since I've been here, which was 2015, but it has not been changed since, I think it was last changed in 2007.
Wow.
We adopted, we adopted an additional local option in 2018, but that local factor that matches the state program has been at 1.3 since 2007.
So we can increase, is that what you're saying, is that we can increase the what amount?
You could increase the local match. Let me, let me give an example.
Yeah, go.
So if the state program gives a residential homeowner a $1,000 tax credit, the current local option gives that same homeowner an additional $1,300, right? So their total tax relief benefit or tax, on their tax bill for the year is $2,300, right? If you take that factor and move it up to one and a half or two, right, that $1,000 becomes $1,500.
Is that, that dollar amount that you're referring to off of the assessment or off of the taxes?
These are all tax credits.
So this is off of the taxes?
These are tax dollars, correct.
Okay. So it's $2,300 reduction in their tax bill?
Currently, at the 1.3, with that $1,000.
Well, that's the title that it would be, is, is the action is on, off of the tax.
Correct.
Okay. And then with the, the document that we have here, because I did find your $1,000 and your $1,300 equals the $2,300, uh, the 2023 Grand List Homeowners Program Breakdown, you have single persons and married couples.
Mm-hmm.
There is an income range there. Are you saying for our local options that we can e, increase that income range, or what, what is it that we would change for our local option?
Okay, so for your local options, the first one, that local option one, matches the state program. So you would have to leave that alone. You could increase the factor, but it wouldn't change the income requirements. Local option two and local option three were the ones that more, were more recently put into place, and that you do have the ability to change the income levels.
Okay, because I think I'm confused here when I'm looking at the document that you gave us, the 2023 Grand List Homeowners Program Breakdown.
Mm-hmm.
A married couple making between $53,000 and $65,000 fall under the local option number three.
Correct.
Their, their benefit amount is $195.
Correct.
Oh, forgive me, please, because the next box, box is the state option. The one below that you're saying is a state option with the local 1.3 option. So where does that $195 fall into?
That $195 is not a state program match. That's anybody who's over and above the state income limits. So if you look at a married couple-
Mm-hmm.
-the most recent state income limit, gross income, is $49,100, right? The two local options above that don't get any state money at all. They only get the $195.
So then what's the local 1.3 match down at the bottom?
That was trying to be an illustration of if you're at the lowest level of the state program of 250, your total tax credit is 575. If you're at the highest level of the state tax credit of 1,250, with the local match, you're at 2,875.
Am I missing something? Because I'm not getting it. Because I'm saying two-
It's a very-
I, well, this is the part where I'm very confused.
Okay.
Because if you look at that top block, it says married couple, zero to, $0 to $49,000, state and local option one, zero to 1250, times 1.3 of the state granted benefit. But then you look down in the bottom box, the state is 250, our local is 325. Where in, on this bottom box is the $195 tax credit?
It's not.
Why?
Because it's, that's all the person gets, is $195, because they're above the state income level. Uh, I think there's a sheet in your packets that shows the state. I mean, it, it becomes very unwieldy, I guess, in this type of a setting, to go through each individual income bracket and what it, so I, I did give you the most recent state. So that, so if, if you're over, if your household gross income is over $49,100, you are given by local option, uh, the one that was enacted in 2008, you're given $195 tax credit. That's all. There's no state portion of that. It's completely local. And just a disclaimer, since the town attorney is here.
So citizens in our community-
Mm-hmm.
-have to make $49,100 or less. If you make more than that, you get nothing?
You get $195.
Okay, that's, that's-
If you're below 65, and that's combining the two more recent local.
Okay. But here it says $53,000 to $65,000, not $49,000 to $53,000. And then here it's $49,000.
I'm combining the two. So the first, the first local option that's not the factor is any, anybody over $4,000 over state income, because the state income moves by cost of living annually, comes out from OPM. So if you're within $4,000 over the state income, you get $195. If you're between $50,000 and $65,000, which was the most recent local option that was adopted by members of this council, except for the new members, welcome, that's also $195. That was originally opposed, proposed at 250, I believe, was the draft ordinance, and the monetary value was changed.
Counselor Kozakowski, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, I'm just as, as dizzy as everybody else talking about the numbers.
Thank you so much.
So let's move away from the numbers, and let's just-
Okay.
I want to understand the purpose of this discussion. So as I understand that there is a state tax credit program.
Correct.
And then on top of that, the state lets us put a local tax credit program, which we have.
You have three, correct.
Okay, and then another one. So are we talking about adding a fourth program, or are we talking about amending one of the programs we already have?
I believe that's the purpose of the discussion this evening.
Is to, one, review what a tax freeze would look like, not a tax credit, a tax freeze, to freeze the senior taxes at specific levels, whatever it may be, and/or to increase our local option. So there's two things at play here. So I asked for both, and these is, this is what we presently have, is the credit, but I'm interested also into what a freeze would look like.
Okay, um, okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
Um, a question for Attorney Corella. Does the state authorize us to freeze taxes for seniors? Yes, it does. Local option, you do have the ability to do that. Under the local option program, we could give a, essentially a tax credit of whatever the increase is.
That's a credit, not a freeze. There's two separate things.
Yeah, so you could do, so there's two different ideas. You have a tax credit for seniors, and you have a tax freeze for seniors. The tax freeze for seniors basically freezes where the mil rate is.
Okay.
Is the simplest way to look at it. It freezes where the mil rate is for people who meet the requirements for that period of time. Whereas a credit is, you know, people come in, they apply for it on an annual basis, and they, you know, if they meet the requirements, then they get the credit on their taxes.
Okay, so the freeze is a real thing. It's not a workaround to, of the credit system, okay?
Correct.
So I think we would have to, I guess, a question. Um, how many of our residents that could qualify, uh, do qualify actually partake in this program?
The income. Uh, I would think everybody who qualifies under the state income has applied, because we do have people that are over income that get denied. Um, and this is a discussion that I've had with, with the current mayor, with the former mayor. As you know, income is a very private item. Um, and so the census data does show us that the median income for the town of South Windsor is $73,000 annually. Um, it also gives us some statistics or data based on, uh, homeownership and age. So if you, if you look at the worst-case scenario for the, for the council, right, you, you could potentially have 2,300 households that are at or below that $73,000. Whether those people are all 65 and older is really the issue of trying to come up with projections on who this would affect. But I think to answer your initial question, I believe everyone who is, who is income-qualified is probably on the program. So part of the, the discussion with the mayor was, are you really reaching out to another group of citizens if you're use, if you're constrained by statute to use the same income levels?
Okay.
If that answers your question.
No, that makes sense. So, um, so to qualify for the local, you have to qualify for the state?
To qualify for the freeze.
The freeze.
You use the same income levels that the state gives for their homeowners program. Just to backtrack a little bit, not to muddy the waters anymore, but something to remember as council members is the state used to reimburse for the state credit. They no longer do. It's probably been four or five budget cycles that we haven't received state reimbursement. So, so everything that we're offering about, talking about right now that's being offered is being funded by local taxes. The state required portion and then the local additional factor.
Okay, so, so the state, so the state reimbursement-
Ended.
So the state tax credit is reimbursed to the towns?
The state, the state-
Did I misunderstand that?
Portion, right, of the program that's required to be offered, right? You have, you have to give, in that $1,000, $1,300, $2,300 example, that first thousand you have to offer. The local option that matches that is within council purview. That's a local option. But that initial state, it's still the state statute has to be offered.
Okay.
But they're all being funded by local.
Okay. Um, all right, thank you. I guess my last is, I'm not going to, I'm not going to drill you with more questions, but I think, um, in general, I'm all in support of doing whatever we can for our, um, senior residents, and, um, I will trust you, your department town manager, to come up with a recommended, recommended program that would work well, and for us to deliberate on.
At this red hot moment, and I think as our associate said a little bit ago, um, probably the easiest and most efficient and effective thing for all of you to do would be to look at that factor in the current tax credit program that we have, and reevaluate whether that factor needs to be changed from, I believe it's 1.3-
It's 1.3 currently, yes.
-up to some other number, because that would be, rather than creating a fourth whole program, whether it's a credit or a freeze, by changing the factor, you're, you're impacting the current programs that we have in place, and you're making them more relevant today for people.
Okay, so I think, so that sounds like an exercise that you could do if you change the factor to 1.4, 1.5, 1.7, wherever you think is a comfortable ceiling would be, that's something that you could provide us?
We can put together a chart of what those different, what those different numbers would look like, probably for you, up to probably two, I would think.
Sure.
And then we can come back to you at your next meeting.
Yeah, and then just, and then add another column of like, some indicator of what the overall impacts to mil rate, budget, some, some factor that's, you know, of interest.
Part of the conversation we've had is what is the, by, by issuing some of these credits, what is the impact to the rest of the tax- what is the impact to the rest of the taxpayers in the community? So what is, you know, if it's, I don't know, if it costs the town ten thousand dollars in tax credits, how, you know, then it would be ten thousand dollars divided by twenty-seven thousand people. And what does that impact to those twenty-seven thousand? So we would do something to that effect.
Sure, that's perfect. Thank you.
Counsel Evans.
Uh, thanks. I, um, a few different questions, as I'm trying to like, understand all of this. In relation to the tax freeze, so it's a freeze of the mill rate. So what if, correct?
It's a freeze of the taxes at the current level, right? So the twenty-twenty-two grand list that we just spelled out in July would be the frozen tax amount, including any current state and local credits. So it couldn't, it couldn't go up, let's just, let's just say it's six thousand dollars, right, for sake of example. It couldn't go, it couldn't be more than six thousand dollars. If for some reason the mill rate decreased, something happened within town that we were able to, you know, have less budget levy, tax levy, it could go down. It cannot go up.
That was basically my question. What if they froze, and then the mill rate went up? So that was basically what I was thinking. As far as, I'll read all my notes. The, looking at the programs we have, so the zero to forty-nine one hundred state and local option one. The one point three is what we give on top of the state?
Correct. It's, it's a match, but it's more than a hundred percent. It's a hundred, one point three.
So we could look at increasing the one point three. Could we also look at increasing the income range threshold?
I don't believe with the way that ordinance is written, you could. But there, you have two others that you could look at, and I believe, and I don't know, see, the town attorney has-
I believe we looked at this three years ago. This came up three years ago under Mayor Paterna, and he asked what the ranges were, and if we could adjust the ranges.
We did when we passed that particular ordinance, because that was under a different local option.
Right, and I don't-
Yeah, you can't, you can't change the state program.
Can't change the state program, you can change the local ordinance.
If you recall, what we ran into at that point, and I think that's why the council decided on the one ninety-five, is that now you've got higher levels of income, and you're giving more than what you're giving on your, so there's, until you move that factor, you may be a little bit prohibited in the amounts that you can give to higher levels of income. If that makes sense.
So like on option two, it's the one ninety-five. Could we then add in like a one point? Can we add in that as well, or that is limited to a specific amount?
You could either change the amount, or I believe add in a factor on that. It probably is just as easy to change the amount. In all three of these ordinances, there is language that says that the council will review this annually. So my request actually would be for this to be part of either a budget discussion or something that, I mean, obviously, this year with the revaluation and everything that went on with the budget, there was a, a more drastic change than we normally see. So that would be something to consider.
You mentioned people are applying and not qualifying. Is that not qualifying for the state, or for town, or both?
Uh, both, both, but not qualifying primarily for the state, because they are over income. And all of those applications, just kind of back that a little bit, all those applications are taken at Human Services, because they deal with income on a lot of different programs. And if somebody doesn't qualify under one of these, there may be other, you know, fuel assistance or other things that they can guide them to. So all the applications are taken there and then processed in, in my department.
Do you have any idea about how far off they are from qualifying? Like, is it a few thousand dollars? Are we tens of thousands of dollars?
Typically, the over income that we end up denying in my office, I would say, roughly, it's probably between five thousand and ten thousand. But again, those, those are the state limits.
Gotcha. And then I just think if it, if it were to cost the taxpayers ten thousand dollars, and this was a benefit to keep seniors in their homes, I mean, I don't remember off the top of my head what a cost per pupil is in South Windsor, but I'm pretty sure it's more than ten thousand. So- Yeah, it's thirteen maybe? So I think this is a huge benefit to the seniors. It's also a huge benefit to our schools and our residents, because it is, it is hopefully keeping seniors in their homes, places they want to be. And as much as we love our families in South Windsor, it's not opening a house for another family and additional student growth. So I think this is like a triple win.
Thank you. Counsel Alanga.
I just wanted to, you know, clarify my understanding. You said that if the mill rate should go down, then the freeze doesn't stay in place?
We, we can reduce- The tax would go down. It wouldn't, it wouldn't increase.
Okay.
I think all our heads are spinning. Mm-hmm. Thanks for the info. Any other questions? Okay, what are we looking for? Are we looking for, Counsel Kazukowski? We are looking for what you asked for, right, to come back with some options. I'm happy I brought this forward for us to review this again. It is written in those resolutions that it's supposed to be?
Every year.
Every year?
Each ordinance has language that says that the council either shall or may review annually.
It doesn't give a timeframe of the year to review annually, because I know you have deadlines by January.
So we have, so the program deadlines are February first to May fifteenth, right? Any change that would take place on any of the local options would have to be in place, vetted, and all of the applications updated and over to Human Services for February first. So I think we always operate around the December fifteenth to possibly the first week in January to make sure that everything is kind of-
Okay. How long do you think, thank you, how long do you think it would take for you guys to get back to us, you and Jen to get back to us with numbers on changing the guidelines here?
On the factor? I mean, I think we have that-
The factor.
Yeah, we have that data. Because it's, it's only-
Can we review that at the next meeting, while our memory's so fresh with all this?
Yeah, we can have something on your agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you. And I promise you, we'll take you to first at the next meeting. Thank you for your patience this evening.
You're welcome.
And thank you for answering our questions and helping us to understand this. If we have any more questions about this, can we jot them down? And maybe forward them to Mr. Maniscalco, that you can forward them on to Ms. Huda, so you can be prepared to answer our questions or answer them before the next meeting, if you could?
Yeah, that would be fine. I'd be happy to do that.
After we all review this at home? And thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it. Thank you for being here. Okay, moving on, we have, excuse me, thirteen B. Deputy Mayor King, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution approving the installation of sidewalks along Birch Hill Drive and connecting to existing nearby sidewalks on Felt Road. Whereas the town of South Windsor's residents have requested sidewalks to be installed along the entirety of Birch Hill Drive, and whereas the town council, per section eighty-six dash eighty-five of the Code of Ordinances, held a public hearing on July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, to obtain public input on the installation of sidewalks along Birch Hill Drive, and whereas the residents of South Windsor approved a bond referendum in twenty-twenty-two that included funding to repair existing sidewalks and install new sidewalks in town. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council, per section eighty-six dash eighty-five of the Code of Ordinances, finds that sidewalks along Birch Hill Road will serve the public need and authorizes the town manager to install sidewalks along the entirety of Birch Hill Road in accordance with the town's standards and specifications.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Counsel Evans.
Just move that we postpone this to the first meeting in October. We have more information from residents.
Okay. Is there a second on the post-appointment? Second? Yeah. Okay, any discussion? Not hearing any? All those in favor on postponing this resolution?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you. The motion carries. Moving on to page five, and that is thirteen C. Counsel Kazukowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thirteen C. Motion to approve resolution authorizing the Public Building Commission to select a new location for the Parks and Recreation Department offices. Whereas the Public Building Commission was established pursuant to section five hundred two of the town charter, and has among its powers and duties the power to study sites and building locations for public buildings as may be proposed by other branches of the town government, and shall, in cooperation with the Planning and Zoning Commission, recommend appropriate sites to the town council, and that the approval of the town government body that will administer the building after its completion shall be required in each instance. See Town Code of Ordinances, section two dash one seventy-two, section three, and section two dash one seventy-two, section six. And whereas the identification, study and recommendation of a location for the Parks and Recreation Department offices should be assigned to the Public Building Commission with the input from the Park, from the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Parks and Recreation Department, in cooperation with the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, to recommend an appropriate location to the town council in accordance with the town powers and duties provided to the Public Building Commission by charter and by ordinance, section two dash one seventy-two. Now therefore be it resolved that the Public Building Commission is hereby directed to coordinate the receipt of recommendations from the Parks and Recreation Commission, the town manager, and the director of Parks and Recreation Department, to identify a site and building location for the Parks and Recreation Department offices pursuant to the powers and duties of the Public Building Commission, and shall, in cooperation with the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, recommend an appropriate site for the Parks and Recreation Department offices to the town council. And be it further resolved that the Parks and Recreation Commission is hereby directed to coordinate with and provide its recommendation and approval to the Public Building Commission as to the identification of possible sites and building locations for the Parks and Recreation Department offices. And be it further resolved that the town manager and director of Parks and Recreation Department are hereby directed to coordinate with and each provide their recommendation to the Public Building Commission as to the identification of a propos, of proposed sites and building locations for the Parks and Recreation Department offices. And be it further resolved that the Public Building Commission shall provide its report identifying a site and building location to the Parks and Recreation Department offices to the town council, not later than a date set forth by the town council at the adoption of this resolution, such date being subject to further amendment by the town council.
Any discussion, please? Counsel Lidecker.
Counsel Lidecker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the one, two, three, the fourth paragraph down, it states, "The Park and Rec Commission is hereby directed to coordinate with and provide its recommendation and approval to the PBC." What happens if Park and Rec doesn't approve? Like, if they're provided two or three sites and they don't approve any of them? I mean, it's their building. They should approve. I mean, that's what, that's what we want. But if none of these sites are going to fit their needs, because they know their needs, then what happens?
Then you're back to square one. Or they're back to square one. I mean, that's in your charter. That's in the Public Building Commission's ordinance, that they have to get the approval of the government entity that's going to be using that building.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Evans.
Thank you. I know this is something we have to pass tonight. This is going to be, going to be done tonight. I guess my only thought, not really concern, I just want to make sure that we're doing the full service to make sure that Park and Rec Commission and the Parks Department, Park and Rec Department are empowered and involved enough. And I see a lot of like, input, recommendation, approval, recommend, like, I just, I guess I just am curious, this is, what does that look like? What does that like, look like, their recommendation, their approval, that work? Is there a formalization of how that will work between those entities? A presentation, an involvement, a liaison, and ex officio, like, how?
I think that what you're asking is, what, how is that going to play out at the Public Building Commission? And what's the nature of their approval going to look like? I think it's going to take the form of something along the lines of a memo from the Parks and Recreation Commission about sites that might be possible for the Building Commission to review and consider. And once the Building Commission has reviewed and considered it, maybe report publicly as to what their recommendation might be, and then the Parks and Recreation Department, along with its director and the town manager, which you're directing here to have input, will opine and commit, comment at those public meetings as to their thoughts about that location, and ultimately come to a conclusion about what the, what the Park, Public Building Commission is going to present to you all for consideration of a location. That's my initial thought as to how that might play out. There are a bunch of param, you know, permutations of that, based on timing and facilities and input. That might change. There might be some back and forth. I don't know exactly how it's going to play out, but that's my thought.
I guess my only question is, does that need to be formalized in this resolution?
No.
Won't you add something, if you want?
I would caution from actually formalizing some type of thing to that effect, because I think there's a natural conversation that occurs, that I don't think we would like to hamstring by a requirement within the resolution, just-
Would it make sense to task the, the groups to come up with a plan of how they will move forward? How they will work together on this? Not, not that we're saying what they have to do, but that they should, they themselves should figure out how they're going to do this and come up with like a-
I think that's in here. Isn't it? I mean, you're requiring, you're requiring the Parks and Rec Commission to, you know, review and approve and provide ideas, as well as myself and the director of Parks and Recreation. I think that's kind of in there.
May I ask our Park and Rec director to come up? And I just, I just want to hear from you, if this is what you're comfortable with. I mean, this is really important to your department. So I'm just curious if, you know, you feel like Park and Rec Commission, I'm putting you in the spot, but the Park and Rec Commission and that your department are empowered and involved, and this is solidified enough?
Yeah, so I think that, from the discussions we've had at the Park and Rec Commission, they've become more motivated to want to assist in really finding that permanent home. I, I think they've really understood the situation that we're in, and how it's really unfortunate where we have to be right now. And I think that once this is passed, I know that the, it's a little bit vague in the wording, but I'm hoping that once it's passed, we can come up with a plan in our next park meeting. Again, kind of outlining like, this needs to be done by this timeframe. It's imperative that we give suggestions and potential solutions. And I do think that members will be empowered enough to be able to be like, yep, let's do this, and we're going to have deadlines. I'm really hoping that we can have some solid work sessions the next couple of park meetings. And I know that my staff are really behind this as well, and they'd be supportive in coming to our Park and Rec Commission meetings, public building meetings, anything that would help move the department forward in a positive manner. Because again, we've been in our building for six months, and it's truly not ideal. We're making it work, but I think that every single person who's been working in our facility really wants to see something better for Parks and Rec. So I think all rallying behind that will, will do a good job at it.
Thank you. My only other question, would it make sense, in this sense, to have a Park and Rec liaison or somehow involve with the PBC? And I don't know how that would work, how you would factor that in. It also would be a logistical issue, because Park and Rec meets at seven-thirty on Wednesdays, the same Wednesday that PBC meets at six-thirty. But I'm wondering if there's some way to incorporate a member of the Park and Rec Commission as a liaison, or some, somehow incorporate them into the PBC discussions with this project on a regular basis? on a regular basis.
I'll reiterate my comments from before. I'm not a fan of liaisons taking on an active role in the commissions that are charged with the duties that they're charged with. I think this resolution speaks very directly that the Parks and Recreation Commission is directed to provide its recommendations and its approval of the Public Building Commission's site. I think it speaks directly to the fact that the Town Manager and the Parks and Recreation Department Coordinator shall coordinate with and provide their recommendations to the Public Building Commission. They are going to have an active role in the site location and approval process. Again, I don't think it's appropriate or necessary to have yet another person overseeing the Public Building Commission's functions, but that's, again, that's your call. You can certainly have one of you or somebody else sit and listen to those discussions and report back, my understanding of what your liaison role is. So, that's up to you guys.
We actually, we have, Counselor Kozakowski is the liaison to the Public Building Commission. I'm just also thinking logistically for our Parks and Rec Director, how she's going to manage both those meetings, but maybe that's a scheduling. And then my only other question is the last paragraph, "Not later than a date set forth by a Town Council at the adoption of this resolution." So I think we need to discuss, what is that? What does that look like? Is it six months? Is it a year? And we have decided that tonight to include that in the resolution.
Okay.
Right.
We haven't heard from the PBC yet, and we're not sure what their work schedule is still with the school, so we don't know of a date as of yet, do we?
It says that "not later than a date set forth by the Town Council at the adoption of this resolution."
If I might, the idea here is to not have this open-ended and to actually move the Public Building Commission forward to get this done for the Parks and Rec Department and for the town in a timely manner. Again, to your point, Madam Mayor, I don't know if the Public Building Commission has informed us of their schedule, so I don't know what that's going to look like. I would suggest maybe a six-month timeframe on this, subject to further, which is why it says "subject to further amendment," so that when you do hear back from the Public Building Commission that they can't get it done in six months, they need eight or nine, then you can address that at the time. That was the idea behind drafting it that way.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Lidecker.
I believe Counselor Kozakowski is in for me.
Okay. Counselor Kozakowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, my second comment was that we have some homework, we have to set a date, but I think we'll do that at the end. My first comment is that I'm hoping that whoever it is, the Parks and Rec Commission, Public Building Commission, isn't necessarily starting from scratch. Because about a year ago, the council appropriated, I believe it was fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of studying this exact endeavor, so I'm hoping that there are recommendations, work done in that study that can be used by the Parks and Rec Commission and/or the Public Building Commission. So, I guess, and my next question is, do you anticipate another appropriation for more funding for more study for this?
You know, from my perspective, we're going to be forwarding on the results of those studies that were already done to the Public Building Commission, let them take a look at it, and they can reach back out if they find that there's a gap or something in there. I would say the previous committee did a lot of work in digging and worked with a consultant to look at almost every option I know of, or that I can think of, offhand, so we'll have to see what the PBC comes up with, though.
Okay, so you'll ensure that each member interested party will have a copy of that report?
Make sure that they have it at their very next meeting.
Okay, so I think if we're going with a six-month timeframe that was suggested quickly, we don't have any budgeted items for further review, so if we do find that there is additional review that would require consulting services, I don't know if six months, within the next six months, we'd be ready to do an appropriation of funds. Would it be better strategic to push it out to, say, June, to make sure that, you know, if we need more funds, that we'll have a better sense in the spring if there's funds available?
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Counselor Lidecker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm fine with the June timeframe, because I know you'll go around and ask. I think my concern, I don't want to micromanage the PBC and the Park and Rec Commission. I do understand Counselor Evans' concerns. I don't want to micromanage what's going to happen. I think we need to realize, we've had a PBC that just built us four brand-new elementary schools with minimal issues, if any. We have very strong town employees. We have our Director of Park and Rec, Molly Keys, we have John Caldwell. They are not wallflowers. I think they are going to be excited about what is coming, and I just, I think if we start putting in here little details of how to do this and how to do that, we're going to, in fact, disempower what we really should be empowering. So, I'm not, I don't want to change this. I think at the end of the day, the final approval has to be with the Park and Rec Commission, and I think we need to see what PBC and Park and Rec has done to date and support them in working together. If there's issues, they can come back to us and we can amend the resolution. That's not an issue, but I think we need to kind of send them out and support the work that they have done to date, and the more, I mean, lawyers are famous for this, the more we put in specifics and the more we start getting into the problems and laying everything out, the more things are starting to explode. So, I think it's good as is, and I think we need to trust our town staff and our PBC to get us where we need to be by June.
Thank you, Counselor Lidecker. Counselor Alongo?
I tend to agree with Counselor Lidecker, because there's so much language in here which says input, which says recommendation, approval, you know, all these different words which, you know, it's not a directive, but it implies that Parks and Rec has to work with PBC. So, I'm not in favor of adding any additional language. And also, I did serve on the PBC for some time, and they do invite reports from, you know, whoever's involved, so they can always invite anyone from Parks and Rec to come and give a report in their meetings to get direct input if that is what is necessary. So I don't think we need to add language to the fact when they're already doing something in practice.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor King.
Yes, I don't want to be a dead horse, but I concur. I think that the Strategic Planning Committee is an excellent template for what this has to happen right now, and I'm also encouraged, Molly, in regards to the fact that, and I agree with you, that being in your current situation is an excellent motivator to get out. And so, when you take those things coupled, and I agree, you know, wholeheartedly that, yeah, too much can almost, I don't even want to play, I don't even want to play in that, you know, and so we don't want that to happen. You know what you have to do, you know what you have to get done, let your people get to work and make it happen. So, the only question, I don't have a problem with the June date either, I just, perhaps I just misunderstood, because if we, excuse me, don't set something quicker, I guess we can ask at any particular time where we're at? Is that fair to say? Okay. So, I mean, as long as we have that option to just say, hey, Molly, give us a report, or PBC, give us a report on where we're at, then I'm fine with the June timeframe as well. I just don't want it to...
PBC, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We can ask PBC, come give us a report, because they answer to the council?
Copy that.
Absolutely. So, we were just trying to find the date for June of next year, the second week in June of next year. I believe it may be the seventeenth would be our second meeting in June. That's what we were just looking up. So, if we could put that in there, because we were looking for a date. Good? Okay. Any other discussion? Go ahead. Counselor Kozakowski?
I'm just wanting to make sure that there's no holidays that would impact the date of that meeting. Juneteenth is the nineteenth, so that's the Wednesday, so we wouldn't push.
We, Ian, we don't.
Can we just say June thirtieth and...
To be on the safe side? You know, it would be July first.
We don't want to go into July, because then we take the break in August. So if we needed to re-meet again to give them any further...
I think June seventeenth.
June seventeenth. Yeah. June seventeenth.
After Father's Day. I like that.
Okay, can we get a friendly amendment, please, to add the date of June seventeenth in the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the seventeenth? Not hearing any? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you. The motion carries. Now we'll go back to approving the amended resolution. And any more discussion? Counselor Kozakowski? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you. The motion carries. Moving on to Counselor Lidecker, please. Thirteen D.
Resolution appointing Mitchell Marks to the South Windsor Board of Education. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Mitchell Marks to the Board of Education for a term ending November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, to fill the unexpired term of Anita Alongo. Consideration of this motion is postponed until the Town Council's next regularly scheduled meeting.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Not seeing any.
Very briefly, I just want to thank Mitchell for being here all evening for this, and I look forward to seeing you in two weeks.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you. The motion carries. Moving on to Counselor Lopez. Thirteen E, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thirteen E, resolution approving sixty-two refunds for the total of nineteen thousand four hundred and ninety-five and eighty-two cents. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves a refund of taxes to sixty-two South Windsor taxpayers, the total of said refunds being nineteen thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-two cents, and as more fully described on attachment Exhibit B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Any discussion? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you. Motion carries. And item fourteen, passage of ordinance, there is none. Public input for any item, item fifteen, public input for any item, any other matter shall not exceed thirty minutes. When recognized by myself, the speaker shall approach the left turn, give their name and address. Speaker shall avoid personal attacks or impugning or alleging an improper motive to any person. The speaker may address the council on any item. The speaker shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. This on any matter other than what was on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on any matter other than what was on the agenda? Is there anyone from, please come forward. And there's a button on the base of the microphone where it turns red. You just have to hit that button on the bottom. There you go. Thank you.
All right. Can you hear me?
You can bring it forward, too, and bring it as close as you'd like.
All right. This is my first time here. I'm a new homeowner in the town of South Windsor. I live at seventy-eight Main Street. My name is Nicole Champa. I originally came here tonight because I received my tax bill, and it went up considerably high, almost a whole grand, and, you know, I had recently lost my full-time job a couple months back. I'm working part-time currently, but not making anywhere as near as much as I was before. I heard the other lady earlier this evening talking about, like, the programs that are available for seniors, and I know that there's a tax program available for veterans, but there's nothing available for us when, you know, life hits us the wrong way, just us normal folk. So I just wanted to express that, you know, it was very shocking, and it would be great if the town, if they know, like, ahead of time, like, wow, everybody's receiving almost a grand increase in their taxes, let's at least mail out something to the homeowners and give them a heads up, so maybe they have time to save, or, because I believe that was voted on in April-ish, I don't know, the new taxes, and I just got that notice a couple of weeks ago. So that would have been just, you know, very helpful, just as a member of the public and, you know, a taxpayer. And then going forward, I don't know if there's anything budget-wise that the council could look at in terms of saving money, knowing that a lot of people got really hit hard with the increase in taxes for this past year. I think that's it.
Is that it? Thank you. Thank you for coming to speak with us this evening. Appreciate it. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on any matter? And a third time, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on any matter? Not seeing anyone, we'll move on. Communications from the council, please. Does anyone here have communications from the council? Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to take the privilege to wish Counselor Phil Kozakowski a very happy birthday.
Oh, yeah. Happy birthday, Phil. There you go. There you go. Deputy Mayor King.
My birthday was last week.
Yours was?
Fifty years old.
Yours, it wasn't on. Why are you lying?
It was. Last week, August twenty-seventh.
Happy birthday.
Fifty years old.
Madam Mayor, I would like to also take the personal privilege to wish Deputy Mayor King a very happy and belated birthday.
Yeah, belated birthday. Happy birthday.
Sorry, I fumbled at the end.
Awesome. Anita's...
Just like the Eagles.
Anita's was Sunday. Go ahead, Merrick. Anita's was Sunday.
Mayor, Madam Mayor, I'd like to take the personal privilege to wish our newest counselor, Anita Alongo, a very belated birthday.
Happy birthday to everyone. Have blessed years. Communications from the council. I would be remiss if I don't mention September eleventh, that's coming up this week, this future week. So I would like for our residents in our community to please remember the families of our first responders and the families over in Pennsylvania, and the plane at the Pentagon in New York while September eleventh is happening, and all those first responders, along with the families of the folks that either were flying or working that dreadful day, and please take a moment out of your life to be grateful for what we have and to bless those families that have the loss that they've lost and experienced. And with that said, we'll be moving on to executive session, please. Deputy Mayor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we go into executive session, inviting the Town Manager, Michael Maniscalco, as well as, if necessary, the Assistant Town Manager, Mr. Roberts, or any other appropriate personnel that's deemed necessary, to discuss, letter A, the personnel issue, which is the performance evaluation of our Town Manager, Michael Maniscalco, as well as, letter B, the pending tax fixing agreement, and then post that adjournment.
I do believe, do we need to invite the Town Attorney, Corilla, in?
For the tax...
This evening? Nope. We're all good with that? Okay. Is there a second? Did you invite Mr. Robertson? I'm sorry.
Yes, I did.
Yes, I'm sorry. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you. We will be adjourning from executive session.